All the meeting board of meetings. Steve knows the committee is excused, Danielle will be seated. Joe said he'd be here, so he belonged, and Knocker was also excused. First item on the agenda, consideration of the meeting minutes from November eighth, two thousand and twenty-three. Everyone have anything?
Yeah.
Page seven, first paragraph. In that paragraph, the comment should be just say, it should say just five foot or six foot. I'm sorry, just five story or six story buildings and eliminate the reference to five feet and six feet.
Right.
So if we can just cross out four of both of those. And then I was good. Anyone else have a few things? So let's see, page two. Promotion to accept the minutes for September twenty-seventh. It's in red. Just can't tell. Who motioned to second it? Paul made the motion and Joe seconded.
Well, Joe, Joe seconded, she just couldn't tell. Like, I didn't have time to.
If Paul abstained, I would doubt that he would.
Right.
Make the motion. Oh, he wasn't here. He wasn't here for the.
For that meeting.
Meeting that the minutes referred to, so he wouldn't have made the motion. But it says here, September twenty-seventh meeting, it says, uh, myself, Joe, OJ, Steve, and Paul.
The twenty-fifth is, uh, Paul wasn't there. He was there for the eleventh though.
Well, according to this, he wasn't here for the eleventh, but he was here for the twenty-seventh September.
I wasn't there for either one according to this.
See that? September twenty-seven, twenty-two-three, myself, Joe, OJ, Steve, and Paul.
Okay, so, okay, I see what you're talking about. I just looked at the wrong page. Twenty-seven. You could just pick one, you're doing the minute, you're doing the minute, so just pick some.
Don't even make the motion. I was there and in favor of it, so.
Yeah, they all voted in favor of it.
Doesn't make me, I don't care. But if I, if I wasn't there, then I, I don't want to.
That was October eleventh, it says.
The eleventh and the twenty-fifth, since I wasn't there.
Right, so we're doing the September twenty-seventh.
Right.
All right.
So you put me in there for.
Okay, so Paul motioned that and I seconded it. Okay. Is that okay? That's fine, that's what happened, that's what happened.
So.
All right, then the eleventh. Joe seconded it. He put me down to. You made the motion really quick. Okay, so this is October eleventh.
Yeah.
Skip two meetings, Paul says you're not here in the twenty-fifth either.
Yeah, my mom passed away, but I mean, there was only one that I.
Right, only one that you missed.
I thought I was there in the. Twenty-fifth on Paul.
She weren't here for the twenty, twenty-fifth, for some reason chose to abstain on the eleventh.
Yeah. I don't think it is, the only one I did was one I.
On the eleventh, it says Paul abstained for some reason, but they can't make it out on tape. Okay. Well, Joe, Joe seconded it, you wanna put me down for making the motion? This is for the twenty-fifth? For the twenty-fifth? Yeah, that's fine, okay. A few more here. Page four. Item two, second review approval for additional seating. Third bullet. Third line. At the end, it says, if H applicant A would in a E. There's like a, there's a couple of stray letters there, it should say if applicant A would want to increase the number of seats. Page four. Item two, second review approval for additional seating, third bullet.
Oh, okay, okay.
You got it?
I know, say what it is with more.
You see the correction, Carol?
No, I see where, oh, I see, if H applicant and A would need, yeah, I got it.
Okay. Page six. Presentation and discussion. Second bullet down, Vice Chief Shad comments, he wants it too. Blank, as it's always been. This is, talk about group three, three, Joe.
Finally. A break, right?
Yeah.
We're way down the block.
So this is November eight meetings. Page six. Yeah, that's what I think he said. Yeah. Think it has its always been?
I think it's still, it's still calling.
That's what I think he said, too, wants to leave it the same or.
One of these regulations, the same as they always have been, but make it still make it two zones, one for downtown and one for three.
Yeah.
Some of the comments are made at that meeting was, we do pitch for setback. Highway up there, it's a hundred feet wide, three villages alone, there are five places that are on the stage right away.
Okay, that's, we're gonna talk about them, we'll just stick, stick to the minutes for the moment. So in that blank line, leave the regulations? I would say remain, just that looks. Vice Chair comments, he wants to remain as it's always been. Okay, so just put the word remain. Yeah. Is that right, Joe? Oh, let's see. Talked about stories. Let's see, so.
Page A.
Page seven. To fourth bullet point down. And then there were a couple of hollow bullet points. And then there's a solid bullet point where it says member vote and ask Chief Espanos. Chief Espanos replies, this section of Main Street, Manhattan Route one twelve, Tang Omega Highway, pointing to the east end of Village Center District where it become general use district land. It's technically part of the Don County area, but is zoned general use. Shouldn't say, but it is shown, because it's, it's not shown, it's zoned.
Okay, so zoned as general use.
Right. Page nine.
Page eight, there's a. Page eight, the, I mean, public care required is another thing. Under further discussion, the blank says Vice Chair. Vice Chair Shad said something about zones and something data. Cannot understand what he said here.
Page J.
Page J. Underneath the, where it says further discussion, second bullet down.
The original mandate, the mandate is two different zones, one for three, one for twelve.
But it was something about and something data. There was some data that you were talking about, Joe, that was.
Remember saying data.
Well, we could take up that first sentence. And just, and just leave it, Vice Chief Shad for the commented, et cetera. Yeah, that makes sense. That's okay. Yeah.
Both zones have a different problem.
Right.
Didn't you read some past online?
Page nine, second bullet up. On the bottom. Says prior to that meeting, they will send ideas to plan a bond, should say prior to that meeting members. This isn't really. Explain who they is.
Yeah.
I think Joe's. Seconded the motion to adjourn. Meeting attended at two eighteen-ten, I imagine that's a point of the tape. There's nothing else, this motion except the minutes with those changes.
A move.
Joe made the motion. OJ will second. OJ second, all right, all in favor? So, anyone opposed, any, any abstentions?
Thanks for identifying yourself.
Yeah.
I think it has, Karen gets more familiar with your voices.
Right. Right, I mean, you think she wants to come in for a few meetings just to be kind of.
It's kind of difficult, she's disbanding downstairs. Taking care of her.
Okay, no, it's fine, I just thought I'd put that out there. Did we get the people in the audience, see someone else, Mariel signed in? Know who that is?
They can voice their opinion, they know.
I understand, I would like to try and keep an accurate tally if it's here. Let's see, why don't we skip over. Page three A and move on to three B. Is your motion to do that?
So moved.
OJ made the motion.
Okay.
Joe second, all in favor? Minus subdivision, S U P twenty-twenty-three dash seven, map one-one-seven, lock four, Thomas Tremblay trustee. Lot line adjustment, boundary line adjustment, between two body properties owned by Tremblay. Mark Tom.
Sorry.
Yeah, you can tell.
Well, pretty simple, uh, basically I own those two properties that. And I'm just adjusting back boundary line between the two properties. Moving. A parcel of land that's fifteen feet wide on one end, six point seven-five, I think on the other end, and two hundred and one feet long. And we're just switching it from the front property, which runs on Main Street, to the back property.
If we do this, we're gonna have to, we. I'm sorry?
Mariel.
Mariel.
We're hearing your conversation.
Did that play?
We are on distant I D, followed by town.
Mariel, you need to mute.
She's trying, I think.
Looks like top right of the screen, you can mute her. No, top right of her screen, her little block, right there.
Actually, no, I don't see anything happening.
I would go to the right of that, click a little.
Well, this little piece that's in between is what you're gonna be putting. Onto the back one of the problems.
Uh, onto the back.
What was the significance of that little piece?
Well, basically.
It's a little strip, so you know. See how it's going along? Well, this line is kind of out of sync with the previous line.
Yeah.
Make it more in sync actually. General use zone for the adjacent part.
What's a little block out area here that I see on?
Oh, that's just the district. New property line. The pink box that says new property line, and the blue box says property line to be abandoned.
Okay. Those lot can be blocked out of the piece.
No, no, it's just shifting.
Yep.
It will be shifting to his house as opposed to his business.
Yep.
Anyone have any questions?
Keep a little left turn.
Go ahead.
Take the piece of land off the front piece, put it in the back. How much square footage, you have less than, less than the front piece? It's more than enough, it's bigger than.
It would be on the drawing.
No one's gonna.
That was like seven tenths of an acre. I think it went more than, more than that.
Yeah, both lots of, one is gonna be point seven-three to point six-nine, the other one's. Gets that point oh-four acres added, so becomes half an acre. Let's, um. Is your motion open up for public comment?
Go move.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Paul made the motion, OJ seconded it. Any member of the public like to speak on this? No, it's your motion to close public.
Paul makes motion.
OJ second.
Should I unmute Mariel if she's here for that?
We can, Mariel, you can put Tom Tremblay's application.
Get her back, I think. What's on the bottom left, it's a red thing.
Just says she's muted.
Okay.
Doesn't say unused, says asked.
Probably muted than her sign.
So, really have to her to follow along, we gave her the opportunity.
Paul makes motion to close public comment.
Second.
OJ seconds.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is the application complete?
Uh, yes.
Is our motion accept the application is complete?
A move.
Second.
OJ seconds.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Is your motion to approve the lot line adjustments subject to, um, the warrant article? Wait, wait, wait a minute, did I miss something here?
Why would it be in one article?
Should be in one article.
Okay, excuse me, I'm.
Well, you just have to have a discussion with him about whether or not. He wants you to put on the warrant, an article to shift. Uh, his loan line, so that it lines with property boundary line. You'll see, um, by looking at the property tax background we gave you, it shifts the council. You're gonna shift under the boundary line adjustment. Uh, the front lots are all in general use, the back lot, even though it's colored red here. Back lots are more red than, so what you would do for doing by putting an article on the warrant is making the zone. Line up with the boundary shift.
Okay, so it's gonna be a little sliver of the back lot now that's general use.
And, you know, it's not like he's gonna be able to put a business on that five by fifteen.
Right.
Well, we've already just obsessed with this.
We assume that if you're attaching your land to a rural residential lot that will automatically follow the zone of that parcel, if it seems.
Is that, is that zone, wasn't that described as being one lot deep from Main Street? Because that lot, that line juts in and out along Main Street, but it's one lot deep, depending on how.
I don't, it doesn't say that in your order, it could have been part of your discussion early on before I was here.
It wasn't a reasonable.
Okay, but it's.
But I would just, when I got advice from the Manhattan Municipal Association, whether or not you could just make that decision. He said. Depends on how it's described in the land use plan ordinance, which I looked at and I couldn't find it saying one lot back. Um, basically, there's just a map, so. You would need to. Some place in the ordinance that I didn't find. Says it's one lot. Some place in the ordinance that I didn't find, says it's one lot.
I mean, it'd make it sneeze. The zone line would break right on the lot lines.
I mean, it would make sense to do it the way Carol's saying it, because
Yeah.
if you were gonna take any two other lots and combine them like that, just remove the line, you would have to do that as well, so. Even though it's just a small sliver, it's probably necessary.
I mean, it's more of a housekeeper, it doesn't affect his lot line adjustment or anything.
Right, we're gonna, we're gonna.
We're gonna approve that.
Approving it, or we're not approving it, however, we can vote tonight.
Right.
And.
The only risk you take is if the, or the people say no.
Yeah, a lot of. Carol?
The only thing that I'll. I got to post the notice for zoning release tomorrow, and you send them to the new thing that they want. So, that's why I need to have you sign, but you want to put that on as a, if you wanted to refer, as a warrant article for yourself, planning work, then I can advertise it, like I would advertise it.
Let me, let me pull the board. Paul?
Yeah, I think we go ahead and do it, make a claim.
That's fine, okay. I agree, Joe?
There's one thing I, in Tom's case, I say, yeah, there's some lots that protrude of the, you have a straight line across, that people, who's up to a quarter of an acre, going down Main Street. Now, we're rather rude as a national, instead of an estate owner.
Right, but we're not, we're not gonna draw a line, we're just gonna change this, just have one little strip that's gonna be resolved.
That one little strip, I can pray, I'm in favor of it.
Okay, now I think I heard you say yes.
Yeah, yeah.
So, yeah, let's put it on.
Put that on the advertisement for public hearing. Okay, Tom? He and I talked about it.
I told him.
No, I saw that on the bar, had to be.
Long and skinny.
Yeah. All right, so is there, um, a motion to approve the lot line adjustment?
Paul both makes motion.
OJ seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, Mariel, snake, Tom.
All right. My lot's here.
He's gonna sign it later, can I worry my question?
Okay, thank you, thanks, Tom, okay, um. Who we want? Attorney Styles, are you here for anything special?
I am, I am hoping to have filed a site plan, uh, application by today for the deadline for the.
Does anyone object if I put him ahead?
Eric, thank you all, I appreciate you, good to see you all. Um, and one of the reasons I wanted to come in is to talk about the temporary structure that's in the parking lot that was, um, brought to everybody's attention, and that the time had lapsed, and I was hoping to, uh, get some, I don't know, relief and possibly an extension of time, because that's part and parcel of, uh, the overall plan that I'll be presenting to you. We've, uh, we've listed, I've got Stuart at Alba working on it, as well as a site engineer, we were hustling to get it in today, but we didn't want to present something that wasn't, uh, complete, so, uh, we'll take the file and application prior to the next, uh, next deadline for the fall. Extends all.
Or is it on the agenda with what is it?
It's not on the.
It's not on the agenda, like, but you.
He was gonna come in and know the business?
Very back of your package, very, very. Okay, the last thing, the very last thing, and if I had, um, Mark had emailed me, I was not even to request an extension, we along with Stuart at Alba planned to file a new site plan.
So this is for it's a better, but your proper, in the proper venue, I think it's actually for to select, uh, Paul, uh, but I came.
Well, let's.
Guarding through the plan and so on.
I called him to do, well, to request you and the enforcement. You, because you brought it to our attention, and you're the ones who wanted us to make sure that something about.
And this is for the.
I think that the, our staff.
Container, right? Yes.
We'll look to you in direct, you know, your thoughts and direct.
And what are you looking to do, uh? So I've, I've, I've expired my six months of a temporary structure, so the, uh, your bylaws say that once you've extended beyond that, it is deemed permanent, so I would have to come in for a site plan approval, for which I was hoping to have application in today with the plan that I brought to you as a conceptual with all of the input that you all had, like we, like, all.
Would have any complaints or anything about it being there?
No, I was just gonna, you know, communicating with him, like telling him, you know, he's coming in, he's willing to do. Light is here, what do you wanna do?
I just wondered if there's been any complaints, but it's in there, that's all.
There was a sign, there was a sign on it initially, and you all asked me to take it, and obviously, obviously, we did that right away.
No, I haven't, we've seen additional.
How much longer are you looking forward for an extension?
You know, um, to be safe, probably six months, um, based on filing and getting some, like down the line, sorry, sorry, because it's, like I said, it's part and parcel of the actual project.
I don't, I don't problem.
I'm okay.
Neither do I.
What's that?
Neither do I.
Okay. Can, can y'all?
I'll make, I'll make a motion to extend the, um,
Approval of the temporary.
Approval of a temporary structure for six months.
Okay, OJ.
Yes.
OJ made the motion, Joe seconded it.
I'm forgetting to do that, so.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hey.
Thank you all, we'll see you soon.
See you next year.
All right, a good new year.
Okay, the other, um, thing that we could do, Cameron, to tell? Um, cause he's been on since.
Yeah, let's go, Kim, what you said, we'll go on then, Mariel.
And he's looking for it for how long?
Well, the approvals can, um, be extended for a new year period. And because he came in, he had asked for an extension, and then he came in because he had a different flag. And the flag has slightly different requirements, he's gonna have to modify the plan. He wanted to know whether you would consider that as a minimalist modification, and, and he did. But we were thinking that that kind of extended the whole thing, and so anyway, we.
I saw it, so.
We, we got our deadlines sort of lines for us, so we realized now that the extension would be bogus. And we realized it'd be a better. Um, Kim, can you, uh, want to say something here?
Hey there, everybody.
Okay.
Uh, the reason, the reason that I was asking an extension again is just the cost and, and what, what the state throwing at us, um, to keep on modifying the plan. So I was looking for a extension again. I did call in in the summertime, trying to see when it's getting expired, and we had a little bit more confusion versus the original, yes, and then I came in second time for the different flag. So I was asking for two-year extension right now, if it's possible.
Paul?
Yeah, I, um, have a question here, so how does this, how does it work if we give a two-year extension? And then say throughout all of the stuff that we're doing here, some of the hotel things change? Because he's got a permit that doesn't affect him?
Right, it's not affected.
So is that a good thing or, or should be considered differently because?
I don't think we should let it go that long, I mean, I mean, if we change rules and ordinances, then he, I mean, two years down the road, then we should comply with the new ordinance, since it shouldn't be grandfathered.
That was my question.
Yeah, I, I feel strongly about that.
Considering a change that, I mean, everybody said hotels in downtown district, which that's at the tail end of it, but I don't know if it makes a difference or not, that's why I bring it up. Like I said, everybody's having comments on that, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, part, part of it, part of it agrees with it, but the other hand, he's been doing his due diligence, so to kind of pull the rug out from underneath him.
Right.
It's not fair either.
I agree, I'm just pointing out, that's all. What do you think, OJ?
I would think that, that, you know, again, the purpose of the changing, of the idea behind changing the ordinances was, was going to, um, prevent the overdevelopment of a lot where you're right up on Main Street and building a five-story or six-story building and two levels underground. That's not happening here. Um, and, and I wouldn't want this board to become a, a, I guess, a vehicle where, where trying to rush people through the job the way they proposed it, as opposed to what he's going through, is dealing with some of the state regulations that I guess are intended, whether they do or not, but they're intended to make the development better. In, whether it's safety or water runoff or whatever, but, but he has to abide by, by those laws. And, and we're gonna interrupt that process, saying, no, you should rush through it, do what happens instead of changing and engineering things right and getting it done to, to state standards, I think that's the wrong way to go. I think it should be, you know, it was approved, he's not making significant changes, or, or if after getting through the state process he is, he'll have to come back here, but, um, I don't see any reason why not to give him another, um, whatever, it's six months or a year, but, but whatever.
He's asking for two years.
Oh, he's asking for two years?
Yeah, two. Carol?
Um, well, he, there also were some delays that, you know, that were associated with COVID, so you know, he was closer to being ready before, and then the costs of, as you know, the health and materials has skyrocketed. In addition, he has to go, he has to get state permission to go underneath, um, the road here, right across the street. Um, and it's, and, uh, because there is a restricted.
Gonna fix the, the stall line.
The store line, so it is kind of blessing us to end up with a building permit from the state firemary as well. So I think between all those two things, um, you know, between the state worried about the traffic coming off Forest Ridge, the state worried about their road over here, you know, he's trying to do everything that you want him to do. And I don't think that, that this particular project is, um, I hate to have to come back in a few months more to get another extension, because those processes that are sort of out of his control are affecting it, like from these.
Paul?
Yeah, I, I think two years is a little too long, but I would think a year would give enough time to be able to at least get an update on where it is, you know, and so it does, two years just seems like a long time to have something out there. But a year, to me, it seems like it, it gives them enough time to go back through the, where they're at, and then at the end of that year, they can come back and request another one to say where they, what they've done. Or where they're at, and if, if they haven't done anything, made any progress, and you might say, hey, look, you know, it's been a whole year, nothing's happened, or they, they may say, look, we've got this, this, and this, now we just need a little more time. And then you can go, you know, you can go with that, but I would think a year would be more relevant.
Well, that's the applicant, Kim Leach, can you get this all done within a year?
Yes, uh, if that's what the board feel comfortable, we, we trying to be out there, trying to get it done, uh, as soon as everybody wants it soon, and then later, the, the problem is just the material, even I did just get the estimates right now, uh, just a few weeks ago, the lumber prices are still up there, um, I can just throw a board, uh, in twenty nineteen construction in Portland, Maine, the lumber cost was four hundred and fifty-five thousand dollar. Uh, the Lincoln project, I know I got twenty rooms more, but it came at nine hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollar just for material. Uh, so, I, 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 you know, everything else is just way up there. It's just mechanical and feasibility way of the banking and everybody felt, it's just not connecting dot. And, and, and that's what I was, uh, there was also a Fed announcement, uh, this week that they are not raising an interest, and next year he's thinking about reducing the interest. So that's where we feel comfortable, that market will come back, uh, to realize what's happening. Uh, realignment is good, uh, but we don't want to be a victim of, of that realignment. And waiting at the right time, so that way everybody's success, not, not, not paying taxes or not paying everything else that goes behind. And that's the only reason that I'm trying to extend this, uh, to make it viable project than getting us stuck everywhere. So even one year is good for me, uh, I think the next year is gonna shake up a lot better, uh, for the new construction.
Okay. Any further discussion? Paul?
Yeah, I'd make a motion to extend this, move second to application for a year, Paul both.
Okay, so send the, send the approval until twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-four.
That sounds great, thank you.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hey, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone have any questions?
Actually, I have a comment.
Okay.
More clarification, I think OJ had a comment about one of the items on the C I P, but how we wanted to see it changed. Was there something with the building or something with?
What was this one right here? It was in the text for number seventy.
Where is that at, girl?
First up, page twenty-three.
Well, on the text, it's twenty-three, the, the text was the problem. The text, I had this in here, and I should not have had that in there, I was looking at the wrong line.
Okay, so, oh, it just, and that's not in the appropriation?
Right.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Appropriation was fine, it was just.
All right.
I looked at the wrong line, I saw the zero, I'm like.
I thought it was in, I thought it was in the appropriation.
No, no, I, okay.
So here's the correction.
All right, I'm, I'm finding, I just want to make sure that.
Yep.
Get that straight out.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions?
How much, how much is taken tax or any, is it going up again?
No, it's a level funding.
Okay, it's period, so, a tax going up again this year.
I know, I could kill.
I make more sure.
Wait a minute, we're gonna open public hearing. Just wanna look at the bottom line here, too.
Okay. Bottom line, including bond service. Bottom line excluding bond service.
Well, and the total's excluding bond service. One million six hundred and sixty-two thousand fiscal year, fiscal year twenty twenty-three, fiscal year twenty twenty-four is one million six hundred and sixty-one thousand one hundred and ninety-four. So it's down about eight hundred bucks.
Yep.
All right, is there a motion to open public comment?
Paul both moves.
Second.
Second.
Okay, I heard, okay.
OJ seconded.
OJ said it first.
I did hear.
That's okay. All right, any member of the public like to speak on this? Mess up something.
Paul both motions to close the public comment.
Okay, second? Daniel Black seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, anyone opposed? Is there a motion to adopt this?
I'll make a motion, we have, Paul both makes a motion to adopt twenty twenty-four, um, C I P.
Okay.
As presented.
O, OJ seconds.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, anyone opposed? Harry's.
You know, just, just to comment on that, um, I know that the process you went through, you, you were conservative in budgeting all the way through. And then when you got to the end, you saw the bottom line, you brought it, um, to what it was last year. And, and targeted those to specific, I think it was three different specific funds that, that you put that, you readjusted the numbers to come up to last year. I, I just, just wanted to say thank you, that was a good, good move by the, by the committee.
Well, I think, you know, we really, it's not that we're so much conservative, OJ, I think that what happens is it's actually pretty interesting, because when all the department heads come in, we're asking them to just explain the need, you know, and when, and truly, they seem to have a, it's not a change of heart, but a change of methodology of what they want, that, that looks like that big snowball, you know, for the, for the, and, and Nate Hadaway said, you know what, I really don't need that, but I could, you'd rather have something else. And that's what, you know, that's what spurs a lot of that on, is the change in the department heads' vision of what they wanna do, so.
And we found, you know, quite a bit of savings, but you know, all the fire equipment, that went way up, doubled, at least doubled. So we had to put a lot more into that.
Yeah, you know, there was a lot of real allocation that worked out, yeah.
And that's why we look at it every year, and I know like over the, you know, back when I was on it, we had cut some of the fire department things to fund other things, because there was a higher priority at that time, knowing that some of these trucks weren't, and huge, and also know that things like the, the, um, pavilion structure, whatever you wanna call it, the tank wreck, I think that is a great idea and it's really necessary. But I also understand we can't do everything at once.
Right.
And the needs that, that I saw, the priorities, I should say, that I saw at the, at the two public hearings for the tank wreck area, that that main building that we already have really should be the focus of getting that back so that there's bigger usable bathrooms, um, you know, just the, the fixes that that building needs. Sort of not fund the pavilion for a year and put a, a substantial sum into the, to the, uh, tank wreck building. I also think this is a good idea, I'd love to see that pavilion.
The only thing, the only question I have, because being the chair, having been the chair on it for a couple of years, is that typically what we do is we, we tend to reallocate based on what the department heads' wishes and desires are. But what we don't do is in comparison to what's been done in the years past, is we don't say, we, we don't take that number that's set that we use and then, um, do the, uh, cost of living increase on top of that. We, we, so that cost of living increase thing kind of goes out the window, we just do the reallocation. If we needed to do the cost of living increase, I mean, so instead of it being flat this year, it would have been up three percent or whatever, you know. We, we, we don't look at it like that, we just tend to, the, the CIP committee tends to look at it like we, we listen to the department heads and whether it goes up or down, if it goes up, then it is up. If it, you know, if it goes down, then we try and real- allocate it to bring it to level at least. But we don't do the three percent thing, see, so that's, that's one of the questions that I would have is, are, are we doing wrong by not bringing it up that cost of living? I, it's taxpayer, I think no, but I mean, there may be other people who, who would say, you know, you probably ought to bring it up, so I, I, I don't know.
It is, it is a good question, we used to do three percent. And we know, you know, again, the, the more recent years have been different, but we knew back then that on average, three percent was a good average, some years it was less than that, some years it was more than that, but if we kept it to three, we're, we're trickling along a little bit above or below that, that inflation cost, um. I, I honestly think that's a good idea to do, because you get a year where inflation is, you know, six or eight percent. If you're at least doing three, you're gonna get behind, but not as far behind as zero, but then as inflation drops and you stay at the three, you're gonna catch up, it's gonna even out.
See, it, it's interesting how you say that, because I, I looked at like Jimmy's comment, so but all the fire trucks that work, we had underfunded. But what, through the process that we did, we actually found that mine to bring that up through the reallocation, rather than increasing it by the, you know, the three percent thing. So that kind of, it, you know, it, it kind of works the way we're doing it because we're, we're able to still bring those items that are, were lower, back up to where they should be anyway. It's just, we're, we're not doing it in the three percent guidelines, that's why I say I don't, you know. Someone other than me, you know, I mean, if, if there's a suggestion from the, the board of selectmen, the town manager, someone that, you know, hey, hey, maybe they should be saying, we're not getting enough and we're not meeting it, show us that. You know what I mean, maybe someone could look into that, maybe the town manager could look into that, say, you know what, even though we're reallocating, we're still not coming up to where we need to be. But I think I'd like to see someone look at that and see that, it's not me, someone would have to do that, I don't know who that would be. You know, just to make sure that.
I guess been looking at it every year, that if, if.
It's meeting the needs.
If, if it's meeting the needs and, and, you know, just know that some years, like, you know, like this was a zero percent increase over last year, eight hundred dollars less or whatever, but all of the zero percent was flat. Just know that, you know, in a year, two years, three years, there might be a bigger jump of three percent because of, you know, needs that either got more expensive or, or came, you know, accelerated in, in their, their time, timeline, you know, we're just guessing how long, you know, it will last, it will last or whatever.
And, and, and we have the opportunity to either bond at town meeting or just put it as a separate warrant article to bring up what, whatever, those items are on, on a singular basis, you know?
Correct.
So, I mean, we can't do it that way too, but I, I'm, I'm just throwing it out there only because it's the end of the process of before you start another one, someone might want to, you know, if you do.
Anyone have any else? Move on. Continued work session, proposed changes to zoning ordinance.
I would suggest that we take care of, uh, maybe the FEMA maps first, just because it's easier, quick. I think the discussion about the general use will take a while.
Okay, let's do that.
And then the second thing, I was, I was.
What was the FEMA spot? Seven, eight, seven?
Yeah.
Anybody?
Uh, number five.
I guess, I'll go there.
Six. Yeah, six, five. Okay. By the way, thank you for doing this stuff, it makes a big difference.
This is happening in this bizarre way. This process, um, because the federal government doesn't really care about our scheduling for town meetings. So the legislature, um, so FEMA has given us the
I think the new.
These are the new, uh, term nets. And so last year, you may be wondering that we had to make some changes in the ordinance in anticipation of this happening. Sometime before our next town meeting, upcoming county. And so, um, the changes have been made and the legislature decided that they were, they enacted the statute, um, and the statute is, they already say six seventy-four fifty-seven flood insurance rate maps. So that the towns could adopt the new rate maps by resolution of the board of selectmen. And then they would make effect then by the statute that they have in hand. So, um, so the selectmen, you have a copy of the resolution that the selectmen signed that they're moving. And, um, I have made the changes. And you'll see, you know, there's gonna be a change in our ordinance, there will be a brief summary in the top, so you'll see the red line, you know, the red line here and by resolution of board of selectmen December fourth. And then I always have a summary of changes in the beginning of the land use plan, so you can find out when we did stuff. And so that's in red right there, so you'll find that.
You're an honorable?
Am I?
For the FEMA, you're an honorable OJ, what?
Wasn't my wording.
Did you see it, you can see that?
I didn't actually see it, no.
The change in the ordinance itself, it's on page thirty-eight.
So that's the one.
On page thirty-eight, I just printed it out on the, you have two pages there, it's in section B, floodplain development district. So I put the date in there, December fourth, twenty twenty-three. They put the language that's required for me to be putting there for the, for that. Some of those panels do not really apply to our town. Um, because they did it in chunks, um, they did it based on the watersheds. So that's why when, if you pull up all these panels, you'll see, you'll, you'll ask yourself, why are they all in there, but it's because these are all the panels that were tanked, the watersheds that were involved. So there's probably only three or four of these maps that are actually part of our town, but I'll put them in there, so there they are. So if, um, so I don't, I don't think that you really have to approve them, but Jim has to sign the ordinance, but now I need to send a copy of this revision into the FEMA people. So anyway, so I mean.
Does this revision, does this revision go to town meeting vote?
No.
No, the state statute allows, allows basically the board of selectmen to bypass the town meeting.
Right.
So, so.
And, and the only change is next week, is the.
Yeah, no, no.
The handles, most of them, and the date.
I think it's interesting, rather than put a, um, a due date, they put the due date is no later than three weeks before February eighth, twenty twenty-four.
They couldn't figure that out with the date, let's.
So anyway.
Try to call.
So my question is, how do, how does this pertain at, at all to the, the floodplain rezoning, I'll call it, along the river? As it correlates to the development, because I know the development from the rip, uh, riverfront to South Pete, just, we, there was all, there was a big thing that we had to wait, I thought, for this floodplain mapping to be redone, and that was years and, and they're coming. Right, and now it's done, according to what I see, it's done and has been reclassified, but how does that affect development along the river?
We already have it on our maps. Because, as you remember, we were on the cusp of having these maps be adopted right before two thousand sixteen. And so, so we had them, uh, we got the data from the mapping company, and the mapping company gave it to our mapping company, and it's on our taxes.
It's on, so.
And it's been on there all this time.
Okay, so does that, did that, or does that affect any of the landowners that are along there as far as what they can get for flood insurance or not get for flood insurance or?
Okay, there is a, in, okay, there's, it, it should, it should not, however, there is a handful, there are, it's a handful of maybe ten people who have submitted, um, what they call change letter change.
Letter of amendment.
Letters of map amendment. Um, based on the old maps, and then I'm gonna have to notify all of them that they gotta redo it, because the FEMA people did not include that in their, you know, they, they're making, they specifically said, you're, we're not including any of this. So I, I'm gonna have to go back to all those people and see if they can get their surveyor to resubmit.
Right, I mean, and, and, and probably my, my comment is that we were waiting for this whole plane remapping to be done. So that I thought when we as a planning board were making decisions about what could be built and certain floodplains, that we would take that under advisement so that our emergency staff didn't have to, we weren't allowing bu- buildings to be built in floodplain areas that our emergency fire department police would have to go take people out of, because they were building in an area that shouldn't be built. Or there was a hazard, I guess. So to me, it, it's, are we doing that now, is that, is that part of what this is that gives us more the ability to take a look at applications and say, you're building in a floodplain and therefore, you know, you could be putting our, our
I mean, it could, obviously, we have more accurate updated maps.
But, but do we take that in consideration, is that a consideration that's planned or takes?
Well, it, it's, when they come, we come in for an application for a house. We take it into consideration.
Plus we do have floodplain regulations that they have to follow.
And they have to have a floodplain building permit, if they're gonna build in one.
So is that, is that part of the application?
Yes.
Okay. That's all, I just wanted to check to make sure, because I know there was a, we had discussions about how first responders were being asked to go into places that were in floodplain, and we said, you know, until we get this map, when I, we don't really know where floodplain is, so you can't really say, you know, you can't build very, you're gonna create a hazard for our first responders, so. But now that this is done, we should be able to, the town should be able to use that and say, you know, you can't build a house in the middle of, middle of the river's edge, because if what happens, our first responders you know, just aren't gonna come save you. Because they put their life at risk.
When we have gotten, um, since we put the, uh, draft or the proposed maps, uh, flood maps on there, uh, we have had discussions with, um, house builders saying, well, the two, you know, because they'll come back and say, well, the two thousand maps really apply, not the two thousand nine draft maps. I mean, flood maps, and we say, well, yeah, but, um, you, if you wanna put an addition on your house, you wanna pay attention to that, you know, the proposed one, because you're not gonna be able to put an addition on your house. And increase the value of it by more than fifty percent, um, if you put it in the floodplain. So they, they have had full warning about that, and, you know, that's something that they have to take into consideration. And I think it's probably been two houses.
I guess, okay.
But now they no longer have that choice.
But now they don't have.
We're adopting these maps.
That's what I was asking.
The old, the old maps.
The old maps go away and these, these, and, and it gives the town the ability to take a look at that and say, hey, look, you're, you're building in a floodplain. Now, does the town have teeth enough to be able to say that, you know? Is there any ordinance that says that you can't build in a floodplain and put some,
You can build.
Some, some first responders', uh, life at risk just because you wanna build a house in a floodplain?
You can build in a floodplain, but that's a whole set of criteria you have to follow.
It's in our ordinance, in the land use plan ordinance, floodplain.
Taken directly from FEMA.
Okay, I, I just wanna, you know, I'm just looking to protect the guys that are gonna, gotta go out there in the middle of, of it and try and save someone who built in a floodplain, that's all. I mean, I just don't think it's a responsibility of first responders to go into it.
Save someone from their bad decision.
Yeah.
That's, there you go. Thank you.
It's funny that, yeah, they don't have the guy at FEMA, because they look at it probably physically, instead of looking at the map, turn it with a pencil. The place they have in a floodman, flood zone, and it's thirty feet above the river.
Does that affect also the, the the levy?
FEMA's, excuse me, FEMA's approach to the levy is because it is meant to weep, in other words, to allow a waterfall through it, even though it substantially slows down that flow. Um, their, their position is that they kind of ignore it, because it won't stop the water, it'll slow it down, but eventually it will get through. I'm not sure I agree with that, but that was the imposition.
I'm shocked that a government agency would just.
Actually, that was just brought up to me this past week, um, because, uh, I, I'm thinking that it was the engineers for Archiviseum, um, uh, they, they're. Uh, they, they're protesting about, um, how the floodmaps do not treat the levy as if it's operational. And I explained that really was not intended as a levy to hold back water. Intended to weep, and it was intended to divert water to upgrade the mill. So I don't know what they'll, what they'll do with that, um.
Well, any landowner, but really their engineer can, can file one of these letter of map amendments. Which, which the FEMA looks at kind of broadly, as Joseph.
Whole thing.
Broad areas, it's okay, this is the flood, the floodlot. Well, if you take any specific parcel in there, and I went through this, I had a parcel that was, um, in, partially in floodplain. But the whole neighborhood was called floodplain. We had to go through and show that, okay, this section of the land was higher than, uh, you know, it was out of the floodplain. And you could build a house in a septic system and all that there, but the rest of this land was not. They, they can, any landowner can still make that application and go through, through the, through taking it out of the floodplain, a specific area. With an engineer who can do all the studies and meet all the criteria. It is part of that, if they can do a hydrology study of that levy and show that, you know, it slows down or stops. I don't know if they can do that in a letter of map amendment, but it, it seems like it would be, uh, worth pursuing. I would that, you know, to check that out.
Well, anyway, that's a heads up. They, they are intending to pursue some.
You know, basically FEMA maps are relatively general, but, you know, an individual owner can get a site, a specific map, submit it.
And that's where I have to do, you know, if I have to notify those ten people who did that. We hired a surveyor, like Waldo Drive is one.
What is it?
Waldo Drive, you know.
Oh, Waldo Drive.
Down here down the kink, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Waldo Drive is one, uh, the woman who bought the, uh, Longhorn Palace restaurant is one. Anyway, there's, there's ten, I think there's ten. And they were all listed in the letter from FEMA saying, we're not gonna, we didn't consider this.
There's part of floodplain that we can't stand on.
I, I think because there was such a long delay, because there was no staff at FEMA. I mean, I just think that they, they just needed to get it out the door and I'm just guessing.
The last time that Longhorn flooded was December thirty first nineteen fifty nine. That was because of a blogger who wiped jams in the river, which made the water come out by the beacon of good on Route three.
Well, she already had one of those letters before.
She's a lack, the letter of map amendment, so they just basically left it alone.
Right, so he, we, you know, we need to have her resubmitted, I guess.
Like when Clark, when they put the air fans in, the town was negligent, given the mistake ahead of time, FEMA declared they couldn't do it too close to the river.
So, so what, what do we need here? Just, do you need a motion?
Yeah, a motion to approve.
A motion to allow Jim to sign off.
I'll make a motion to allow Jim to sign off on the current FEMA floodplain mapping.
Okay, okay, that's Paul, Paul's second. Great, anyone further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close.
Are we on now?
Well, I'm sort of jumping around and trying to do the easy ones first.
I'm sorry.
We have that long discussion about.
I'm gonna go on to Route three.
What's on, Melon?
Create two general use districts.
Okay, I think we should do that.
Number three.
I don't think we should do that right now, because that'll take a longer discussion, I think. I was thinking that we could just.
I mean, we got other things that are gonna take long, I don't, I don't see how it's gonna be short meeting.
Well, I was thinking more of the, um, we already discussed adding the adequate usable space definition to the. The land use plan ordinance, it's already in there in the special exception part, but I just wanted.
Which number are you looking at?
Number four, four, they want it to be.
Okay. Who have those been formed? I don't know.
There'll be a fat clip in there.
Yep, but it's all four.
And then they'll.
What page is that gonna be on in?
Okay, so there's, it's in a couple different places, all right, so let me just. It's, it'll be in the definitions, which is thirty one page.
Thirty five.
Um.
Thirty five, number four, sites are reasonable or opposed to respect.
Yeah, twenty four.
Twenty four or thirty five?
Well, it's.
I'm in the land use plan ordinance here.
Okay, land use plan ordinance, the background with the fat clip.
Yep.
Okay, page twenty four.
Okay.
Okay, so in the special exception section, there's the definition of usable space. And so I'm putting it here, but it doesn't include the whole section. It's just the usable space, um, definition. So then the other part of the usable space has to go in. On page thirty five.
And then this is all related to the floodplain?
No, this is on number four, this is the practical usable space. If you remember, we were all, uh, searching throughout the ordinance for this part of the ordinance that referenced usable space. Like what we could include when you're, have a development and if you're calculating how much usable space you have, how many units you could put in there. You had to deduct the unusable space from that totally, and then you calculate.
So.
The definition of the usable space, like I said, is on page twenty four. And I took that right from, we found that language under special exceptions. And although our lawyer said it's okay to leave it there, but it's, you know, it'd be better if it was house. Well, you have to leave it there, but you shouldn't house. So I put that section on page thirty, it actually goes thirty five, thirty six, and part of thirty seven.
So I'm not sure that I understand, on page twenty four, B four, how that affects usable space in regards to development.
Okay.
I can start there.
So if you have a hundred acres and, um, you wanna divide that, uh, by fifteen thousand square feet or about a third of an acre. So, so you'd have three hundred units to put on a hundred acres. However, not all of that land is, is really developable, or it should be included in that calculation. So these are the things that I was, were listed under our special exception for land that does not, is not considered usable space for development. And if you look at B, um, this land within the special flood hazard area, the base flood elevation, a hundred year flood. Land defined as protected shoreland, public waters, land covered by wetlands, water bodies, watersheds, and drainage systems. And land with steep slopes, you know, greater than twenty five percent. You know, this comes right out of the special exceptions section.
But I think that's.
It's identical.
Based on what I see happening today in developments, they're using engineered, uh, retaining walls. To be able to develop on steeper slopes, so. That doesn't correlate with number four, because you can take, you can take a steeper slope. And you can use it by putting, uh, engineered retainage on it, concrete, you know, those walls that they put up. Uh, whi- which allows you then to use more of the land, and it's an engineered process. So I, I, I don't know that number four is correct.
Well, except you already have, because that's your rule then.
That's what I'm just saying.
So I understand, yeah, we can find the land at a premium, Hawaii.
Well, this is saying that you can't include it, so i- i- in your total, so you should be able to include it in your total if you're going to use approved engineering methods to be able to stabilize it. Whether it's do a, a, uh, pre-engineered concrete wall or some other, you know, they drive pilings or something like that, that's, allows you to be able to use that space. And I, you know, I mean, there's, there's places in South Peak, there's some, you know, that, that are doing, uh, those pre-engineered walls.
And I'm, oh, sorry.
Well, just so you know, you now have a second house sliding down the middle, so just. Uh, the, the house is built in two thousand fifteen. Um, it was right after we passed the ordinance about, um, stormwater and retaining walls, um. The house is up in Forest Ridge on Spruce Lane, so.
They have rock walls or engineered walls? They must have rock walls up there, I believe, I don't think they're setting up this engineering.
Anyway, so, um, so he called, the owner called here to get all the information that we had about engineering for that particular house. And this is, this is when we were not having Ray review anything, we were just, we just passed the ordinance and, you know, they just had to. Have the retaining walls be less than four feet in height to avoid, you know, the construction oversight. And anyway, this is sliding.
Well, all right, but that, but that's, that's why we put big changes and not having rock walls higher than four feet. That plus it was a totality, but, and, and the other thing is that we went to engineered walls so that they would.
I mean, there's always restriction on the height of retaining walls, it's just if they were there four feet, you have to have an engineer do it.
Right, right, and, and, and that's what I'm saying, is that if you have an engineer do it, it, it should be classed, it, it should be able to be used as usable space in your calculations rather than not. You know what I'm saying?
I mean, I think this, this applies more to new sub单位 as opposed to existing lot.
Well, that's what I'm asking for, it, it sounded like it's not, it, it's a definition of usable space. It doesn't say whether it's, um, for commercial or residential or, you know, it just says it's usable space.
Well, the changes that are, are proposing is making no change whatsoever to what you already employ. It's just a matter of putting the definition where the definitions are. And so what you're having a discussion now, though, is you wanna change also the special exception part, you know what I mean?
Well, no, I hear you, I, but if we're looking at, I, I don't know, is it, is it too cumbersome to consider that now, or, I mean, I'm just asking.
It has to be in the notice for tomorrow, I mean, tomorrow.
Oh. Someone had to move on. Hey, Chris, it pretty looks good, I'll put the power.
Didn't see you sleep.
It's pretty good, but.
No, that has nothing to do with it.
I'd have a hard time correlating numbers like this to reality. Now, twenty five percent, the state says is extreme or whatever they, whatever word they use, extremely steep. Are there any houses built up, up on the mountain that are on twenty five percent lots, or are they?
Yes.
Yes?
Well, I think they, this is, uh, as, um. Or it's a prior to site disturbance, so there are twenty five percent slopes that are prior to disturbance. So then you can take and you can put a retained wall on that.
But they are, they are over twenty five percent?
Oh, some of them, yeah, I can tell you that one to one, um, the, there's a house, a law on, in the landing. That, what, what they had to do was hire a geotechnical guy to come in and do a study of the soils. And by doing that, he was allowed to be able to do a one to one slope because of the soil composition. And all this stuff gets pretty, I'm sure, it's pretty technical, you know, but the, the long and short of it is, you know, we just wanna make sure that. The engineering, if the town has copies of all of the engineering and the engineering for the rock walls, cause like, I was dealing with some stuff up there with, in shade concrete. They design, design itself, the, the concrete rock walls. They just wanna make sure that you've got all that data, so that if something ever happens, like Carol was just talking about, that the town has that. And that's more where I'm going, is that, you know, these, these engineering methods are approved. But, you know, the town should have, the town should have.
They're not, we're not reviewing any of them, because we don't have a building code enforcement officer, so there's nobody.
But Ray does.
He's not, he, all he's doing is making sure that they have a plan.
But he's making sure that that plan.
He's not guaranteeing that their plan is good, he's just, he's not, he's not double guessing or, or redesigning. There's kind of a line that he doesn't go over, like, you know, we were just looking at somebody's plan where the drainage, how they did the drainage. You know, he would never do the drainage that way, but they have done the drainage that way, and that is their design, and.
Yeah, but if, if, if he just, but he says, you know, he wouldn't do it that way, it would work as is proposed.
As proposed, but you, there's an assumption there that the contractor can read plans, which they can't.
You make that assumption of anyone that comes in, any town, if somebody to do something, you assume nobody's good.
There's a reason why most of the towns in the state of New Hampshire do not allow people to build on steep slopes like Lincoln.
Yeah, most of the flat, but you know, I gotta tell you, you drive around various towns and you see, oh, pick them out of all the general stores, they've got these huge concrete retainer walls or they're, they're.
They're Walmart.
Walmart, or whatever, I mean, they're used, they use this pre-engineered.
But are they on twenty five percent?
Prior to.
Prior to slopes.
I'll bet prior to, or, or they wouldn't have had to put that slope up in order to make that.
Terrace.
Make their market areas or make their buildings, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, but that, I mean, that's not necessarily true, you could have a mild slope, but if you're gonna cut it back, you know, a hundred feet.
Yeah.
And put in a big retaining wall, it wasn't prior, so I, I mean, I know from, from being on the, that Pemmy River Local Advisory Committee. Um, that we just, uh, actually just published a draft management plan for the Pemmy River, they're gonna vote on it in a second. And there's a summary in that of all of the towns, and many of them have these steep slope ordinances. Where you just like, you cannot build on twenty five percent, and then if you build on fifteen percent, you need. One and a half times the minimum lot size, so our minimum lot size is twenty two five?
Fifteen.
Fifteen, sorry, twenty two five is duplex, like fifteen, so, so on, I don't know what theirs is, this varies towns, but if it's one and a half, now you're up at twenty two five is your minimum, if you're on a. Whatever, fifteen percent slope, and you go up to twenty, it's more, and you, and then you go up to twenty five and can't do it at all.
But so you take, I, I mean, I'll give you an example, if you take a, so you got a road here.
Yep.
And you obviously got up slope here, down slope here.
Right.
So you take a look at the ones that have a steep slope here, or twenty five percent. But what they can do is, they can put fatter, wider concrete basements in, like over here in, in South Peak. And they bring them closer to the road, but it was twenty five percent before they get there. And then they, they make the con, the, the foundations wider and fatter to retain the house, and they bring it up. So it's at the same level as the road, or just a slight amount going into it, but it was more than twenty five percent prior to starting. So by, if you took those out, then you would be restricting their ability to build on there. A, but B, if they've got the money to engineer their engineering install a. Appropriate retained wa- concrete to hold that, that structure, who's to say, you know, I mean, is, do you say no to them?
I mean, they could come up, they could come in for a variance, they thought it was worth their while, I mean, I think you said the key word is money.
I mean, money's not the reason to make any decision, but.
Well, I.
I mean, money's not the reason to make any decision, but as far as planning board is only for, but I mean, it's. To me, you know, you're you're inhibing their ability to use. As much of their land as they can, if they wanna put the investment in, I guess.
But I did.
How do you, how do you?
I think a lot of people would be discouraged from doing so because it's not cost effective.
Not today, not today.
Say like, do you know, but right now at Coolish Falls. There's one house lot, the road is almost, almost a thirty-five percent downgrade, forty percent. But he's building on it at this time, he did the engineering, put in some filing, put in some. Steel sheeting with interlocked sheeting, I don't know if you've ever seen that?
Yeah.
Shape like this, and a few of the work for it, he's driving down the pile, so it's straight down to bedrock. They build on it, that house over there, over here the foundation is probably about twenty-five feet of better height. That's about a thirty percent grade or better.
There are a lot of people with a lot of financial resources that can afford to build on steep lots, I guess, a lot of. You know, that, the question is, does town care whether they build on those steep lots, so long as they do it? And with the appropriate engineering stuff behind it?
The fact that I was again, I was also talking about being built as we, as we talked right now. The owner, homeowner said, can it be done? The engineer said, yes, it can, said, I don't care what the money is, I just wanted to view the amount.
Yep.
But I mean, is it all, I mean, is that your concern is whose responsibility, you don't slide?
No, 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 my concern is that this says, if if if, this is saying that they can't do that. And there are people that I think that probably are.
The space here just says they can't do it no matter what.
Right.
Well, I think when we talked to Mr. Lynch, Mr. Lynch felt that some of those lots were too small to support. Houses based on the steepness of those slopes, that was why he was talking about merging. Some of the lots up there, and he's already merged, what, three of the lots up there.
But that was on uphill, yeah, that was on up that one, not downhill, but you go over here at, you go over here at uh South Peak. And you'll see some of those houses that they built are, they have. One-story below ground, or three sides of it are below ground. The second one is above ground, and the third one and fourth one are above ground.
But if you remember, that man who came in here, whose house is sliding down the hill, there are three houses below him. So his house goes down, it takes the, he's gonna take the rest of the houses down below with it.
So, yeah, but I mean, holds is another one, I mean, you look on that, uh.
He can't, he can't, he, in order to fix it, he has to hire somebody with a helicopter. To bring in the pilings, and he couldn't, he couldn't even find anybody willing to do it. So we.
But that, that's the thing.
Asking for trouble. Um there's a lot of water that comes, it's not just, you know, can that little postage stamp, can I put? You know, put a house on there, and you know, I'll have a great view, but. Your, the, all water that normally goes down over that slope is gonna go down, you know, it's gonna affect everybody down below.
But what you're, but what you're also not even bothered to say, when you take those steep lots. If it's, if they're allowed to use current engineering methods, whether it's concrete. Pilings or, you know, whatever, they don't have to disturb as much of the lot. So then, so then they can build on a smaller footprint, so that truly helps the. Stormwater protection stuff, so I mean, as long as it's not that, yeah.
I I will say this, our stormwater management ordinance. To me is the key protection of these, that if you have. A steep, steep lot, we know what the pre.
Brain box.
Pre-run of runoff is, they can't increase that, so not only do they have to stabilize the house or. The engineer needs to, you know, make sure that that happens, you also, the engineer also should make happen, sure that the the water runoff doesn't decrease.
But you, right.
And and. I guess if they can do both of those things on a steep lot.
You can. Because you can do two, you can also put two lots together. If you have some of them steep, you can make them bigger, disturb less, which means you don't have to bother with the stormwater because you're disturbing less.
I went out in the, in Austria, in the Alberg region, they're building a place they're forty-five, forty-five percent. For this uh Wellington end, it's backed with big money and buying and keying.
I mean, that's what I'm saying, it it's a general, good good general discussion to have, but. Uh I, you know, if we're looking for. I'm okay with moving it to the place where it's supposed to be, I'm just.
How how about this, what if we, I mean, cause again, this is what our ordinance already says. Just in a different place, now we're just putting in the right place, what if we make this change between now and next December? We get, and I'm not sure Ray would be the one to do this, or someone else.
I think a geotechnical guy would be the one to talk.
To come in and talk to us about steep slopes and twenty-five percent. So. Should we restrict it all twenty-five percent, or should we put in separate criteria for twenty-five percent?
Think requiring larger lot sizes would be the way possibly, possibly though.
I mean, uh uh other towns have done that for lower steepness, but we could do it for twenty-five percent.
I do like your idea, because I mean, when they build a house, it's like the impact, you know, around just the structure itself. Is pretty dynamic on these steep slopes, I mean, they profit in Coolidge.
Yeah, but, but yeah.
They can draw it out on a little, you know, their site plan and say, oh, we're not gonna disturb any more than here, but it's well beyond that.
But I mean, it's still required to keep all the runoff on the lot.
Well, but not with them, because they have cuts. So the lot is the whole, the common area, et cetera, et cetera, so.
The overall.
So there's, you know, the, it doesn't really apply.
But I mean, you look at some of these places that are built up, built like that, I mean, they are, they're stable, you know, I mean, the ones that are falling. Typically, if you look at them, they've they've had no engineered walls, retaining walls. I mean, you know, we built that, I built that road up from the mountain club. That's, so that, but wait a minute, whoa, whoa, whoa.
I was saying, that's, that's steep.
Well, but the one that fell was, it was called an engineered rock wall, and it was made, don't remember when it all washed out down below, below there? It was made to be. Let's see this, that. That's bottom, tops like that, and it was all rocks, and this came up, we did an engineered reinforced earth, Kent Lindon was the guy. Uh reinforced earth uh retained wall around front of the mountain club, cause we moved it, the road used to be slope side, and we moved it in the back. And that that was the thing, but it still, it stayed there today, no one's ever done any inspections on it, I think that's where we fail on a lot of stuff like. The inspections of stormwater management, or the inspections of concrete rock walls, or, I mean, concrete walls, or things like that. Put them in and we just walk away, you know, what's up?
Contractor signs off.
Yeah, I mean, that 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 that.
That's, that's a town road. Right, behind the mountain club?
I believe, I don't know, I don't know, isn't there something, OJ, but it's on the top, tell me a feat, and then the rest is. I I I can't remember, I don't feel great, people say there was something about the top three feet and the, the engine, the drainage was the towns and the. Water was looms, and so it it got piecemealed up a little bit, but anyway, that's.
We have a vested interest in maintaining that block wall.
Well, I can tell you that.
What any piece of paper says.
Yeah, I know, that's.
It's our asphalt on top of the. On top of that rock wall.
Yeah, the rock wall, I I don't know if anyone's ever been down, well, I like to know if anyone's ever been down below there at all, I mean, I built that. Well, Congress built it.
So can we?
We revisit this next year.
Can we put this in as proposed?
I'm fine, I I just have to look at, I just have a question.
Next year.
I'm fine.
Right.
Do we need to vote on that because we're gonna bring this to a public hearing?
Yes.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we accept the changes um as written, related to the um. What's it called, usable space?
Yeah.
Definitions.
Adequate usable space, definition is usable space, and adequate use space. Okay, also in this clip, we already talked about the.
We wanna vote on this?
Each one of these this time, yeah.
All voting, I'll second it.
All right, OJ made the motion, all in favor? Anyone opposed? Okay, can I watch?
One down.
Okay, there's, the other one was, uh, we wanted to revise the definition of multifamily housing.
So we all said we've done before, right?
Number four is over.
Number six.
We're on the number six now?
We're skipping to six. Sixty-seven, so um.
Six.
We don't, it's all in this big clip area.
Oh, all in big clip area?
Yeah, I I did this to remind us all that I had to, we had to deal with, so. Okay, so the multifamily, um. I was a little confused about, uh, about it when I was looking at my United States H twenty-one. Um, and so I was confused about what we decided to uh make the definition of multifamily dwelling. Um, cause I didn't.
I think.
Jim had originally said the building contains three or more separate housing units.
I mean, we had talked about it, that's what we come up with, after we, you know, back and forth.
Yeah, but we don't.
Been a while, so can we, can someone tell me why we're changing them?
Because the way it's written now, you could put three small houses on a single lot. And there have been instances with, you know, the town has already said no to a person trying to do that, but if someone. Looks at the ordinance, so yeah, maybe they can do it.
Anyway, we don't have a definition of housing units, so I'm suggesting we use the words dwelling unit. Um, you have a building containing three or more.
Structure.
Definition of structure. That structure would be.
A structure containing three or more separate housing units.
Now, this says a structure or combination of structures, so does that mean that?
Well, that's the current one, the red one is the eyes one.
Oh. Proposed changes to twenty-four. Okay, I didn't have the red, I said, oh, I tell them, okay.
Multi-family dwelling is a building, according to general building, and you're saying, Jim, you would say a structure containing three or more separate. Housing units?
Well, they shouldn't have housing units, cause we don't have a definition of housing unit, and we refer to everything as dwelling units, so. We just stick with dwelling units, instead of.
So instead of a building, we can say is structure?
Containing three or more separate dwelling units.
Three or more separate dwelling.
Units, well, this could be.
We put that in there, that would. Repeat someone for building cabins, but like created with lodge, and there would be a difference.
Right.
I'm asking you, that's.
Why would that be different, so? And and.
Was it business use, is it residential use?
Well.
I'm sorry, Jim, this is resident.
Multifamily dwelling, uh. Let's see, multifamily, the residential use, but we.
We have a restricted multifamily.
Right, okay, yeah.
Something should be done about that, if you put a duplex in, it's a more square foot than you for a single family. But if it's three, but if you put a housing unit in, three apartments in it. It doesn't, it doesn't go into the twenty thousand square foot rate for duplex.
Yep, that's, but that's only allowed in certain zones, it's not allowed in residential zones, it's restricted, multifamily.
I think you're right.
Yeah.
Okay, so for multifamily dwelling, a structure containing three or more separate dwelling units.
Yes.
Okay.
Do we need to vote on that?
Yep.
So, Paul, I'll make a motion, Paul Biden. Um, the new multifamily dwelling unit definition will say multifamily dwelling. Is a structure containing three or more separate dwelling units.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Danielle, seconded, all in favor?
I, I.
Oh, go.
Question.
Well.
This mean it's only a definition, but not a change of use?
Right now, we're just correcting the definition.
Correct the definition, okay, just wanna make sure, for someplace, it could be a conflict. Not go on with it.
Okay, so those five, five, five to zero, okay.
And that's one new page just prior to that.
The dwelling, we definitely dwelling unit, we didn't have a book that. Definitely a dwelling unit, so. Um, I looked at a bunch of them, and this was kind of, uh, use them are kinda like this, so.
We say, where it says a, um, dwelling, where it says a building, can we say a structure?
Yeah.
So, that way there, we can look up structure and see what. Is everyone okay with that?
Say it, say it again, Paul.
Where it says dwelling unit, says a building, I would like to change it to a structure.
Yeah.
Then you can look up structure and see what it is.
Okay, my only hesitation about the second sentence was that, um, we do have a bunch of condo hotels, which are. Um, and we have full-time residences, residents in some of them, um. So those are, you know, those really are kind of dwelling units, but the the vacant ones are you, are. Set out as like hotel units, but.
If if we took that whole second sentence right out of there, then it would just be.
Starting with this use, so shall not be deemed, just basically include the first sentence, is that what you're saying? A structure portion thereof providing complete independent living facilities for one or more persons, including permanent provisions for living, sleeping. Eating, cooking, and sanitation period.
Period, and just.
That'd be it.
That's it.
I think that's fine.
Cause it it treats everyone the same that way.
Oh, and is this just a housekeeper, or have we had problems?
Um, no, but we reference dwelling units lots of places, and most ordinances have a definition of dwelling units, so.
Cause once you start trying to include or leave out, then you inevitably forget something, so we just say what it is.
Okay.
Does that make sense? I'll make a motion, all vote. That we set the dwelling unit definition as a structure or portion thereof providing complete. Independent living facilities for one or more persons, including permanent provisions for living, sleeping, eating, cooking, and sanitation, period.
Okay, do you have a second?
I'll second.
Danielle Black, seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes.
Number seven. Hmm, oh, yeah. Hey.
Okay, so I wasn't sure what to do about the, I know the. The board of selectmen is, are your short-term rental people, but I wasn't sure. How that works with respect to holding a public hearing with zoning amendments. Because it doesn't sound like the planning board was supporting that. I don't know how, I'm assuming that we have to have a public hearing on that in addition, but.
If I review statute, segment can propose it, but the planning board holds a hearing, and at that hearing, the planning board can make changes.
Good to hear.
So my question is, do I, do I include that? In the the notice when I when I make tomorrow?
I mean.
For a public hearing on the short-term rental.
So the public hearing for short-term rentals would be a public hearing for the planning board, so.
I mean.
But I think it's, it's a proposed zoning ordinance, but it's not one from the planning board, it's one from the board of selectmen.
So the planning board would hold a public hearing, and they would either recommend or not recommend in that.
Correct.
And at the, on the or, on the town warrant, it would say that the. Board of selectmen recommend, the planning board doesn't.
I don't agree with that, I think the board can make changes during the hearing, because it says, if a substantial change is made. And you have a second hearing, so doesn't say that, just because it's come from the board, board of selectmen, it can't be amended at the planning board hearing.
So do we have to call the attorney to find that out, should we find that out before we go through the process of?
I mean, we're gonna publish it tomorrow, but I mean, the board's already voted no on the short-term rentals, but. Again, it's, doesn't prevent the selectmen from proposing something.
No.
Because like if, 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 uh, say a taxpayer had petition this morning or. We would. we would have a public hearing on it with all the other proposed amendments.
Right, and then we either.
And then we would make a recommendation, either to recommend or not to recommend for that particular one. But with the petition warrant article, you can't change.
Right, but I believe with selectmen proposed, the board can change it.
Okay, well, I'll have to check with the town.
It seems quite strange, it's gonna be, uh, you know, it's gonna be put in the warrant article, right?
Well, the problem is, I'm going on vacation, so I have to send to the paper.
That's the point I'm trying to make, what I'm trying to make here is, it should be able to help discuss if people came in to discuss it, what they wanted or not. Got a second hearing, not because selectmen do it or the planning board does it, but my interpretation is, it always give a second hearing, people off the street to petition it and change it or amend it or approve it.
Well, the statute says if you make a substantial change, first public hearing, then you have the second hearing.
Well, I noticed two hearings to begin with, so I say, the, the second hearing, if needed.
If needed.
I put it in the pit, so I, I would put it in the paper that way.
Yeah, and then we make a decision at the first hearing whether we make a substantial change.
And hopefully find out from the attorney what.
I mean.
I mean, yeah.
In, in my mind, what's sets happen to planning board, if selectmen can just ride roughshod all the rest of it through our.
Well, they're not really, it would be like a.
Well, they only proposed it because the board voted no.
Correct.
Part of the board voted.
Well, the majority of the board, so.
All I care about is the process right now. What's, what's the process, just so I don't get it wrong, so that you have an opportunity to do whatever's gonna happen. So. So I'll call the, uh. But I'll put it on the notice.
Yeah, I mean, they, they proposed it, so we're obligated to have the hearing.
Yeah, okay. Right. So if you wanted to know what it would look like in here, it's in here. The short term, what it would look like if it's put in.
What page is that on?
Okay, so the short-term rent on page sixteen, uh, I didn't have a page coming up, but starting at the page, uh, ninety two. Right.
Oh, ninety two. Uh, I mean, it's.
Oh, I see. Ninety nine. Ninety.
No, it's on, it's ninety nine.
Yeah, cause it, when I, when I put additions in, it, it completely throws off the page number. I just took it and I put it in as written, so.
So we're gonna have two hearings on this?
On what?
On the selectmen's proposed.
Well, if we make a change at the first hearing, then we'll have a second hearing, just decide whether or not, the second hearing is just basically up or down, whether they're gonna move forward, you can't make a substantial change at the second hearing.
But it can be voted, it can just, at the first hearing, if you don't like it, if the planning board doesn't like it, the planning board will just vote to not recommend it.
Well, you can change it at the first.
Right.
Right, you can say, I don't agree with this section, but I like, you know, the first section.
Okay.
And, you know, that's a substantial change, if you're gonna cut sections out. And that's, then you'd have a second hearing.
Second.
If you couldn't add stuff back in the second hearing, you couldn't make another substantial change, the second's hearing.
Could reduce it or not, yeah, no.
So you're gonna, you're gonna set the date.
Second hearing is an up and down, you make the changes at the first hearing, if you want. I don't know how the first hearing is gonna go. Running possibilities. We. I can't find it.
It's ninety nine.
Hang on, it's in that.
The big.
The big clip, the proposed changes for twenty twenty four.
I got it right here.
You're on the ninety, page ninety nine?
Almost to the end.
I'll read it back.
There it is, I've already looked at ninety nine, I'm not looking at sixty six, I'm reading it right.
If you're looking at ninety nine, you're all being read.
Yeah. Mine's a logical seven administration. My page ninety nine.
Oh, you must have.
I don't know. We'll get you with your.
Take noses. That one doesn't have either. Let me check those words, thank.
I mean, it's, it's the same ordinance we've seen before, so I've seen it already.
Oh, you're the chair, you wanna have a thought?
Uh, here's one.
Right.
I just was surprised.
Read in the packet, right?
Okay, so we, we don't have to vote on the short-term rental when it's, because it's already.
No.
It's not being proposed by the board.
We're not gonna recommend or not recommend, we're going to have the public hearing.
The public hearing, then we'll.
Then we decide we're gonna go one way or the other.
Thanks, I think Sarah's in approval.
Well, we'll have to decide, find out what our, our rules on.
Number one?
So I think we're down to number one, this is the one.
Well, you know, Carol, I noticed you added a few other definitions here.
Well, we just talked about, but it's from here, the definition of multifamily housing and dwelling.
Wait a minute.
What plane was in there too?
There was something in there about definitions, um, based on the I R S rule for your, your second.
Oh, no, that was an earlier version that I sent you.
Okay.
That, that's what I was trying to figure out, how to deal with, um, something, and I just sent that to you.
Okay.
But, I, I sense I've taken it all out.
Okay. Well, I think that was in the version that I just gave you back.
That's an old version, so.
I'll make a call, please. All right, now we're down to number one.
One person, at least it's completed. Carol said you had two back, people with ideas.
Well, yeah, I had. Email, I got my hearing, so.
Okay, you, you should each have.
No, yeah, I know.
One's blind, two are good.
So.
Did you have one?
I have one of each.
One's filled out.
Everyone's filled out.
And this is another.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, these two are filled out.
I convinced Carol, trying to get a little bit more information on the G M D, the G M D, the map, which we also give us tonight, and that's it, so. What are we proposing? Where are the changed districts? What are, what are the changed districts?
Basically, there are two areas, three areas in town that are zone general use. You have Route three, that's spaced up on Route one twelve, I think past, is it past Obershon? I think, cause I think the Legion is general use, but I think Obershon is B C.
Main Street, Carol.
Okay, so here we put three, the yellow, one would be all here, the three, and one twelve, the one would be all over here.
And then in back, South Peak is also here in use.
South Peak is all, well, not the bottom part of South Peak, South Peak goes all the way to the property bound, about the boundary line with Woodstock. Um, so this part right here is still rural residential, but from this point all the way up to here, which is where the town water tank, you know, water, uh, processing plant is, that's all South Peak, and that's all in general use. And then, um, the other part that's generally used is town property where the recycling center is, or in you know, where the balloons, the sort of the balloons are, the very back of Riverwalk. Um, the east of Buck, uh, land along Bunker Lane, which includes where the rapids is. Across the street, starts with Rayocho, Shopping Market, that's general use, so.
Yeah.
Um, so that's the ski shop, or the stumball shop, or whatever, I can't remember what it is. And then Nachos, and. Uh, and then includes, goes all the way up to include the Nordic, and all the little houses behind the Nordic. All the way to the cop, and all the way to the intersection where you would go if you wanted to go to the Common Man, so. Pollard Road, so it includes the Common Man property, it includes the Camelot Hotel's hotel. It includes Pollard, um, Brook, that whole development, the Pollard Brook. And then the amenities associated with Wood Village.
Okay. Well, basically, Route three would be its own separate zone, and the current, can use down here would be a separate zone.
Give it a change, and direct the grievance that the planning board had done inadvertently, in the way that Route three was pretty much ruled residential. Clark had to come board, the fight gets it, what, what, can you remember?
Yeah.
Give it a chance to rezone it.
That's all fixed, right?
No, not all fixed, still something, it had, it had Clark, still ruled residential.
Thank you.
Cause it drew a line across, said it go by the wild line.
Okay, and that should not be the case.
So we should just, we can.
All of Indian Head, let's say, one would be all.
It's, all of Indian Head up to the river is general use.
But the backland is supposed to be general.
The backside, they had another hundred, two hundred acre there, that was put in rural residential. Without their permission, without their asking.
Yeah.
This is done when Tom.
Okay, but I think that's, we fixed that in the vote of the two thousand.
Only certain parts, not the whole thing.
Yeah, Carol, is there any land that's rural residential? I don't think there is, I just look at the map, I don't see any of the yellow.
What is one oh two, on the right-hand side of the river?
This one right here.
Yeah.
That is rural residential. There's, there is a box right here of land that looks like it probably is associated with Indian Head that is in rural residential.
That piece of land. When I came in, when I were talking about that.
That's what you just talked.
Yeah.
The last, that's part of it, that piece of land was bought by Indians seven years ago. It used to be in general use.
No, you're talking about the, on Route three, the seven acres. Let me see that.
Going across the beach.
That's the one oh three one, I believe.
Yeah, that's one oh, one oh three, that's only seven acres.
Yeah.
So that's generally, this is the backland. That should be, that should.
It's a hundred acres coming right up, you want to put a ski area in there, full of rural residential, never be able to.
They want for a ski area in there. But, so that's the backland, that should be general use, that's.
Correct.
Yeah.
This should be all general use. Plus the, Clark, that was another that, Campus World site.
Yeah.
We can't even figure out what general use is when we want to read.
This piece right here.
I think that's Potter Forest, it doesn't have Potter Forest Ridge, that's Campus World, right, that's it back at Campus World, it's Forest Ridge.
Okay, I can tell, where are you looking at? That's Forest Ridge.
Okay, Clark, really have more than this one, it's a lot there, this is the Campus World, it was, it was two lots bought off this radius. The town was ready to get it, get it, without the permission.
Okay, so. All right, so we need to go back, let's just look. Look at the votes at the town meeting, cause I know we, we fixed that, probably before you got here, Carol, but there was a town meeting vote to fix that back then.
One oh two?
Yeah.
So.
I don't remember that.
We're down here, more, not one oh two, what's that?
Well, you just said the backland, you didn't get that.
Yeah, there's another piece of land they bought.
No, no, this is the other piece of land they bought, the seven acres.
Okay, the one oh three.
Yeah, one oh three is the back.
One oh two is ever changed, town meeting.
Cause one oh three is owned by the hotel on the front.
No, it's not, it used to be.
It used to be Potter Franconia Nights Motel.
Yes, no, it wasn't.
It used to be.
No, never was.
What, one oh, which did you talk?
Oh, I'm telling you.
Paul and I were talking about lot one oh three, but, but the most of it is irrelevant, it's, it's showing as general use.
So.
Right.
Yeah, so, one oh, one oh two would be interesting to find out, in the original zoning map, was that rural residential or general use?
General use, well, you know what?
I just.
You know what, it was changed?
No, I wanna just, I wanna see, I'm requesting.
You won't be able to find that original map, the original map was drawn over by Tom.
So I'm questioning what the original map was, I'm telling you that was changed at the town meeting vote.
Okay, then.
Do you have any idea what year it should be, so they can look it up?
Between two thousand and ten and two thousand and twelve would be my guess.
This part would change, but you didn't have one. Maybe one.
Well, I mean, that was a bone of contention that.
Do you have that, Carol, two thousand and ten, two thousand and twelve, okay.
I mean, in the, very beginning of the ordinance, it says when changes were made, so I presume we can find it.
Well, not all of the changes. No. Documented. It just says, you know, the zoning amendments were adopted.
If it was vote, actually, if it was voted on, you just go back to the town warrant.
It was voted on.
That's what I'm saying, it's, where it started, it doesn't matter, we have, it was changed at the time.
The one town warrant, where the correct stuff, the planning board is doing a math in the very, they couldn't find, they couldn't find the original map.
Well, yeah, go back and look at the town warrant, see what it said, and then go over there.
This should be going back again. Who's there?
Yeah.
Oh, that's back of course, okay.
When looking at page eleven, okay, so page eleven has two thousand and ten town meeting, and we saw in four parcels along Route three, from rural residential, with general use. Which were for?
Well, find that out, meaning, whether it was the backland, Campus World.
Okay, at least you found that, and I'll go back and find that, that annual town, town report.
Yeah.
And it may say which ones are there.
Could be clear over there.
Not enough like the planning board.
Yes, we could.
Yeah.
You said two thousand and ten to two thousand and twelve.
I should have split the difference, and I would have been right on the money.
Would it be, would it be, would the laws actually been listed in the town warrant?
We'll have to find that.
It should be, I mean, I.
If not, you'll have to look back in the planning board minutes.
Yeah, I mean, you wouldn't just talk in the back, you wouldn't just put it in the back, and we're only just rezone for life without standing.
Right.
So.
Somewhere, yeah. But there was a lot of strange stuff that happened back then.
Yeah, well, I'm just wondering how it keeps getting changed back, that's all.
I can tell you, it'll get changed back, but I don't know, Tom had it even admitted, but you passed away, he changed it, on the basis of winning the selection.
Joe, you're not supposed to blame him for that.
But it's fixed the future. We died, Tom apologized, we're doing it.
Apologize to you?
Yeah, I was discussing with, you know, I didn't realize that, I was doing what I was told to do.
So, are we doing anything with this?
We're just waiting for Carol to come back.
We take five minutes?
We're taking a five-minute break, yeah.
Okay, you.
Thirty years ago, then we did a landslide, piece of land here, for this one. It's horse there was the top.
Okay.
But it went back, so it could happen, so, they were all through it, the horse there was still ready to go with it.
Yeah.
It looked to be favored to that one.
Oh.
It never came with that, but it was all discussed in my house on, hit the table.
Yeah.
So, that would do it the better for them. Hit one of it, one reader.
Yeah.
He would have, they put the railroad going up this far, could have been the highest elevation of public, most high in the state.
Mm-hmm.
Railroad.
Yeah.
There will be like, can you speak to the other one right here? In the white side color, state owns it. You're gonna put a road coming next from here, right through North Woodstock. Now, right here. The state already bought that property over here, this base, it puts moving. Corner going around, coming up this way. Bypass, down Woodstock. Back to the maps, my, I had. Town bar from the never turn. Hey Carol, how do I get my maps back?
That's all it says?
Four parcels.
Says what?
Now we're gonna look through the minutes.
Change the designation, the system. Change the designation of four parcels along Route three from the rural residential zone to general use. Yes, one hundred and seven, no twenty.
Technically, in the old map, Indian was classified rural residential, the whole hotel, but they changed it inadvertently. That's why it said four five, one, two, three, four. This property, you would. On a change, they had changed it back to. Him and Peter came in to rearrange.
Just on program.
Just us four parcels. In the down one. Do you have to go back and look at?
Are we, are we looking at now the, the uses, you know, from each zone?
What are the zones gonna, my question to Carol was, so it's just to create two general use zones. So, we have two general use, we, we have many general use zones, but.
One, one zoning classification is general use. Now we're looking at forming two and, and.
You like the general use A and the general use B?
However you want to be general use, you three zones. Yeah, whatever. But I think one was along the whole strip of Route three.
Basically, Route three will have its own zone.
Right, and, and then.
So, a- and the reason to create these two zones is so you can have different zoning requirements.
Right, because people have expressed concerns about, you know, the big hotels on Main Street, you know, maybe. I've, I've said this before, if you guys don't wanna do it, I mean, we won't discuss it.
Oh. I've listened to the, the, the people that have said that there, that. There's been comments made about things like hotels or whatever, short term or whatever, whatever they may have a problem with. But to me, unless they fill out a complaint form or a, a letter of suggestion or something that. To me. Verbal really doesn't matter because my interpretation, if someone came to me and said, for example, I've complained about Jimmy. I could embellish on that, change that, where if they write it down. What their suggestion for change is or complaint, then you'll have who, who complained or who. Made the suggestion of what their concern was in writing, so unless we have some, something like that, I don't think we need to change it.
Some people, I mean, some people just complain because they don't like change.
I'm like that sometimes.
I mean, we all, I.
I think our role is to look at the zoning. On an annual basis and say, is there anything we wanna change without people writing to us and documenting it all? Does it make sense? To have different restrictions for what seems to me like two areas of town that have taken on very different. Personalities and development and, and. Meeting town needs. I think it's worth discussing. Now getting to the philosophy of why we're discussing it, I'd like to move into, just discuss it and at the end vote yes or no.
Yeah, no, 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 that, okay, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with discussing, I mean, I, I think we, we currently, the town currently has. In the past, discussed, for example, up there on the highway, because they, they've made that designation of it being a. What, what is it, a zone? Economic redevelopment zone.
Vitalization.
So I mean, we have made different changes in that regard to, to some zones.
I understand that, but, you know, those, those benefits are very miniscule.
I think it would just put more restrictions on what they can do on one twelve in comparison to what they can do on Route three. With the big hotels, the space, I mean, we have to do something, I mean, we were voted in. To represent people of the community and if we don't do something, I mean, we all have your complaints. When we're out on the street and if we don't carry them here to the table and take it all into consideration instead of having them. Write a letter and create more work for, you know, the town officers to keep track of it all and we really have to do, we have to represent the town and the concerns and. These are the concerns that we all hear and you can't deny that people don't come to us and complain about the hotels and the Airbnbs and. And that's what we're supposed to be here to help.
We can't just make, we can't just make changes based on someone's emotion either.
Well, that's right, I mean, but prior, what? Prior to all this development happening. A lot of people had a lot of complaints once it started happening. And, and, and it didn't stop it, it just grew, so.
Well, we can hear, see it here, I mean, nobody comes to these meetings.
The horse is out of the barn. It's, it, it all, it, it's all been developed, the tax rates are showing it without having the. You know, Phil Gravine used to call it the goose that laid the golden egg. You know, because of all the people that come in, allowed us to be able to build and use all those tax dollars that they have spent to, to. For our infrastructure and stuff like that, I mean, you know, I don't, look, there's a lot of things that I personally don't like. But I'm not gonna see them changed, I mean. They just won't change. I mean, I like to see us on the main street, we call that, you know, this, a multi, a multi-use development of, uh, development over here. And, and, and it's, it's supposed to have commercial space and residential, but, you know, it has one office in it and then, then they called it a multi-use. I mean, that's not, you know, those things should change, where are we gonna have a, a business friendly main street?
Like, what do you wanna change? They'd like to that, did that inspire you to think of anything to change?
Oh, with that.
Well, then why not change it?
But you're not gonna propose it and you don't wanna discuss it.
Well, cause I have a hard time telling people what they can do with their lots too, you know, I mean, that's one of the reasons that I.
That's why we're here, and I'll pick a motion to table a discussion if you don't wanna, if you don't, if you wanna make the motion.
I do have things that I would, would like to change, but I, I mean, if someone buys a piece of property. And they, they fit what they want within the criteria of what the townspeople have voted on. Then you should be able to let.
We can't say no, really. Argument that people, someone here said, well, you know, it's across the street, it's not a question of whether or not you like it. It's basically if it fits within our ordinance.
And if it doesn't, like we did, we made waivers. So you sit there and talk about the ordinances that the townspeople have adopted and guess what? Along comes the.
They voted to give us permission to use our judgment and grant waivers.
That's right, we were, you, we were within the powers.
We didn't ignore the votes.
No, 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 but that's right, you had the ability to do that, but you circumvented what the, and that's all I'm saying, circumvented what the. What the taxpayers voted on and that's your authority, that's the authority of the planning board to be able to do that like the zoning. But there's supposed to be what's called a hardship. And I, you know, in order to meet these things and not enough times, there's a hardship criteria come into play. And I, that's, that's where, that's truly where the rubber meets the road and making these kind of changes. People can still apply for waivers, variances and the hardship criteria is not met at most. It's not. Take a look at what a real hardship is, it's not financial.
You know, we're beating, that's water over the dam.
No, but, but it's when you're talking like, stuff like this, that's what it all is.
We gotta talking to by the town attorney for going forward on granted waivers, et cetera, so. Those, so, when next time it comes, the board will think harder on a waiver.
I mean, someone could come up currently in the general use on Route three and wanna do something different. And they can get either a waiver, a, uh.
Variance.
Or, or something from the zoning board to be able to do what they wanna do, which, which has happened. So the ordinances are, are, are working and the process by which the zoning board can allow people to do certain things. Does, does work.
Joe, how do you feel about this? You wanna talk about it?
We can talk about it, we can, till we decide to go in one way or the other.
We'll move forward then, you're not gonna make a motion to table it.
I'll make a motion to table and see where it goes, all over.
So a second.
Just put it to zone.
Right, you wanna table discussions and create two general use zones?
Progress, I've been suggesting that for the past twenty five, thirty years.
I guess that means no. Okay, no second, alright.
Good, but having two zones, we can make one above more restrictive, there will changes for it.
Well, exactly, I mean, Route three has surplus.
Surplus until, that depends on the market will, will dictate. Not a surplus at the moment, but when there's people who land down here.
Surplus in the sense that we have a road that's underutilized. You know, eighty thirty three doesn't back up on the ninety three and one this week.
So motion fails, go discuss.
Okay, so, didn't get a second, so.
Well, that's fine.
And we're gonna vote again, so you know. So the two people that submitted, return these, thank you for taking the time. So one of these just only made a few changes, so I'm assuming that means he or she is okay leaving it as is.
Yeah, the one that, well, there's a lot of blank spaces is mine. In anything that's blank, I'm just saying, I don't see any need to change. Now, um, if, if someone else, obviously, if someone else has a different opinion, I'm gonna discuss each one. But I'm saying, if it says yes, it should stay yes, if it says no, it should stay no, it says special exception, it can stay that way. Then, then the ones that I've marked are a change from what's in the current column. That I've said it, you know, change in one or both zones, so I only marked the ones that I think should change. On the other one, on, and this is Danielle's?
Yeah, I just breezed through it, I probably.
But does the check mark mean?
Yes.
Yes? And, and if it's blank, that means no, okay.
Okay. So first item, single family detached. Currently allowed in both, in both districts. Or it's currently allowed and proposed that it remains allowed in both districts. Anyone have anything issue with that? Duplex currently allowed in both districts. Uh, question is returned, no change, does anyone have any issue with that? Attached accessory apartments are currently allowed. Post be currently allowed, does anyone wanna make a change to that? Detached accessory apartments currently aroused. And then one person said, um, allowed and no change, another person suggested only on Route three. About his board, does, does the board wanna discuss that? What is, Carol, I think the state statute basically has criteria about allowing. Accessory apartments.
It's not the criteria for, they, they wanna encourage you to allow, um, uh, the apartments. Um, I, I think the only thing that, that I as a staff person is concerned about. Um, are the lots that are accessed by those weird little. Lanes that, where they don't have access, direct access on to. Uh, the town roads.
Excuse me, but these, this is the general use zones, we're not talking about the residential zones in back.
Yeah, I'm just saying, those are the only ones that I have concerns about are detached. When they're, they're using the garden lots and wanna have detached apartment buildings back. So I don't have any concerns in the general use zone, right?
It almost has the village center, which that bigger than. They shouldn't, we shouldn't allow detached. Unless by special exception or with a variant. The village center, under detached accessory apartment.
Well, you know, I guess my thought is, if you wanna create a walking downtown, we need to have people living there.
Yes, but if you have a small lot, that we've done a main, they proposed it a little while ago. Even off Henry Lane, remember, just another accessory apartment back.
Right, so we're talking about these three zones.
But we can make, if you're in case you're being village center, you can try to do it.
Yeah, but that wasn't.
Let's stick with the general use zones first, it's gonna take us forever to go through this if we keep including other zones. We can go back and do that afterwards, but, well. Getting too distracted.
I mean, I would say, you know, we need, we have a shortage of housing. Would say allow it, all the zones.
I agree.
Paul, anyone else have, wanna weigh in on that?
I think it's fine the way it is.
Elderly and disabled housing, um, currently allowed in both zones. One person said not to allow it downtown, only on Route three.
You wanna disallow and link it downtown.
You know, when we're talking downtown, we're talking a little bit.
No, I was just thinking that there, I couldn't imagine where it would go.
I mean, a lot of these uses, there's really no land available to build on.
Right, right, that's where my thought was. Probably on a lot of this, like, well, where the heck is it gonna go?
Somebody goes too good, they're gonna buy something, tear it down and. Yeah, multifamily housing. You know, currently allowed in both zones, um, again, it's something the town needs, we have the restricted multifamily. Cluster development currently allowed in both zones. No one wants to make any changes. Phase, planned phase development currently allowed in both zones, um. One person says keep it as is, one person wants only have it on Route three. Any thoughts?
Well, you did that and wipe off South Peak, wouldn't it?
Yeah. So I guess they're already approved, so.
But they're not a three hundred acres that be on the right, they're gonna. Yeah, the three hundred acres, you know, how is your property?
Original plan.
Yeah, I guess I was just making right along Main Street.
What's that?
Set the horses out of the barn.
Manufactured housing currently allowed in both zones, I mean. Don't see any place downtown where someone's gonna put a mobile home just because of the value of the land.
Container boxes.
It was not really.
I know, I'm just being speaking.
Libraries, no one's proposing any changes there.
So what do you call those container boxes? Well, you just brought it up. What is it called?
Storage container housing, yes. It's like a modular home, we don't disallow modular homes. I'm not, I'm, I'm just, that's my thought, you can disagree.
So, it, um, is a modular home considered manufactured housing?
No.
No, I think it's just mobile homes.
Yeah, mobile, I mean, when you say manufactured, we're thinking of mobile homes.
I, I think modular housing is considered manufactured home too, cause. I I think modular housing is considered manufactured home too, cause. That's the way I think you'll find it, it is.
I mean, it's made in a factory, but.
Yes, and 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 it's designated as such, I believe, if you look at the definition.
I think we referenced the state statute.
State state statute that I believe has manufactured almost has. And it's actually, it's assessed differently too. It's assessed differently, I believe, manufactured.
I live in a manufactured home.
Me too.
Is yours?
It's manufactured, technically, it'll be called a modular.
Modular, right.
Modular, it's a modular, yes.
Yeah.
But if that definition is being manufactured in a factory and driven to site.
Yeah, we make our six, seven, eight, three now.
Well, that's what I think, that, I I think you're right, I think that's what they said, that it's manufactured offsite and brought to a site. Just like a mobile home is manufactured offsite and.
I think the difference is of mobile homes on a steel frame.
Right.
Correct.
Yeah, whether you take the wheel from the not, it remains on a steel frame.
I don't know.
Modular houses are wood framed.
Right, modular house, I mean, just built in modules.
But anyway, if 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 this refers to a mobile home park, I'd say we leave it alone, I don't see anybody building it downtown.
Right.
We can zone it out, even if you allow it, I don't think anybody's gonna build it. If you said land's too valuable.
Right. Yeah, libraries, no one has any changes there.
You know, and that public uses. Anybody has any changes on doing it, or just open the whole thing one block?
Yeah, I wouldn't mind doing that, I mean, are there any public uses that need to be changed?
Not that I can see.
No.
I say no.
Well, you didn't.
Again, you know, when I checked this off, I was thinking just along Main Street.
Not just the general use of.
So what's a recreational facility?
So like a skating rink, maybe the Camp Rec? Something, I would say, I would say recreational facility would be something owned by the municipality.
Yeah, it is public use.
Was it?
Yeah.
It's public, i- i- it's not.
It's called a public use.
A recreational facility would be.
They were private museums, so it's not really, it's open to the public.
Recreational wouldn't be like, they have one planet fitness or something like that.
Bowling alley.
No, but you can't make money running museums, so I don't think we keep worrying about. Not any private museums.
Would a recreational facility be like a plant fitness or something like that?
I I mean, I don't know, I I would think so, but if someone's gonna build a bowling alley, or what if someone's, what if? There's there's a proposed recreational facility as part of the new Rapids, uh, project that was.
That's what I was thinking.
I mean, we. Of course, that whole thing wouldn't be considered recreational facility. It'd be considered mixed, mixed use, where one component is recreational, and one is a hotel, and one is condos, one is whatever.
Right, but it's not open to the generally public, it's still, it's gonna be open to South Peak and the Rapids.
I mean, it's more like an amenity to a private.
Again, I I don't see any reason to change any of those.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, now we have business uses, um.
So have we changed anything? Not yet.
Not yet.
Just double checking.
So the next one, you know, adult book video store. You know, that's kinda protected by First Amendment.
Correct.
So I don't know if just allowing it by special exception is the right way to go. I would say a special exception downtown and allow it on Route three.
Well, I don't think anybody's gonna be setting up any video stores or bookstores, it's.
A modular asset, she ran a farm if I put one end of my house, self kicked out of the town. I'm serious, tell me she sit there and rented out farm.
Well, that's a home based business, Joe, that's.
Yeah, it won't be, but I do it.
I mean, should we just?
Yeah.
We wanna make a change, or just leave it?
Leave it.
Leave it.
Okay.
They refuse, they should, they should come in.
Yeah, alright, so let's see. Banks allowed in both zones, say leave it. Boarding of Roman houses.
I'd leave it, again, I don't think someone's gonna take valuable downtown land and build that, but but they would incorporate that into a larger development, but.
Yeah.
Who knows?
Manufactured housing park.
We have camp grounds.
Oops, excuse me, I would say.
See, I don't.
Oh, okay, so you did change it, I'd say, yeah, special exception downtown and allow it on Route three. Again, I don't think there's any land.
No.
On Main Street anyway.
Right, but there is definitely land up in Route three.
Right.
Yeah, Campus World, Indian Head.
Yeah.
Clarks.
Yeah.
I wonder if they're ever gonna do it that way?
Sorry?
They're ever gonna do it though.
I can tell you.
So far, we've made one change, campground, a special exception in downtown, a yes on Route three.
Manufactured housing park.
No in downtown, yes on Route three. Currently allowed in both zones. Maybe you wanna make a special exception downtown in case someone has a hold of an over fifty-five pack that they wanna put downtown?
I'd be, I'd be fine with that.
That we can use your judgment. Well, it's.
Exactly.
You know, some of these uses are allowed or a lot, but you're never gonna see them posed.
Yeah, we could put a force ridge, yeah, that's, that's the hotel.
Okay. So, special exception downtown and a yes on Route three. Eighteen facility.
That'd be in both seconds, cause you proposed, remember, you wanna do the casino thing?
Who's this?
To the location town is.
Right, well.
To a mountain up on Route three.
Yeah, well, I know, I mean, here's why I'll say, say yes, I know the Legion, they might, they have they have gam, you know, somewhat of gambleness, they.
Yeah, that's why they came in, and be bored.
Yeah.
There you go.
Yeah, so.
Leave that yes.
Leave that yes right across, okay. Own business, you know, that's encouraged by the master plan. Let's leave that, hotel motel. You know, currently allowed, this is where we're getting.
I think I checked that because we were talking about minimizing like sizes and you know, the heights and stuff like that.
Well, I mean, that's, I, why for suggesting a separate zone, they're gonna minimize the height on Main Street, it might not work on Route three.
Right.
Say leave them both yes.
So hotel motel the same?
Hotel motel's the same.
So yes in both.
Yeah.
Okay.
So what, you're you're.
I thought that's what our complaints were about.
I was just gonna sit here and say, everybody was talking about this.
But they're complaining about the building, they're not complaining about the use.
Correct.
What, they complain about the building?
Height and set back.
Well, I mean.
Well, the only way you're gonna change that is to change the ordinance.
Well.
Right.
Right, which is off the next page.
Just to remind you, zoning board said no to four stories. And you guys said yes to four stories, and you allowed them to use a wall and treat it like it was a level.
Yeah, but apparently, you know, apparently, they need to go to ZVA for four stories because it was allowed on the land use ordinance, so that was kind of a moot point.
Well, cause it was the thirty-five feet to the primary E that was violating.
I mean, again, that's, you know, water over the dam, the board made the determination.
You have to think about these things the next time this comes up. Because they're gonna look to see what you did over the ham to the end.
Well, that's what we're trying to do, not up to that yet.
I think that discussion should come in a few minutes, we get on the second page and talk about setbacks, heights, minimum minimum lot size, maximum lot coverage, all of that, that's the next page.
Okay. Live recorded adult entertainment. You know, again, it's protected speech, so.
Say special exception is what it is and just leave it.
Yeah. Uh, okay, next two kinda related, restaurant and a drive up restaurant, don't think anyone posed any changes.
Nope.
Wait a minute, you you have a drive up restaurant that's special exception under the Village Center?
Yeah.
Is, is where the common man, is that Village Center?
No.
No, they shouldn't use over the.
Oh, you know, generally used.
Restricted multifamily residential housing. No changes, I mean, it's something the town needs. Tourist attractions, I mean, it's tourist town. Tourist home. Any changes? Motor vehicle sales and service.
That's one that I don't, that I think would be much more appropriate up on Route three.
Well, we could do special exception downtown.
I don't think we have a current maintenance.
I don't think that's correct at all, I mean, people come down balloon, get their gas and get on the highway.
Well, we're talking about service station first, then we're moving on to.
Sales and service. So so it's a, it's a garage that that.
So it's a garage.
That services vehicles and was.
Sort of like a car dealership.
Well, we have three on Route three. We have John Hamm, Jerham Hamm, Timmy Churchill.
Yeah.
So.
But what's the matter with having them in downtown, if there was one, one would be downtown? Yeah, actually, how about the, the one that's on across from the.
Okay, so you think that it'd be, you get enough complaints about how John Hamm's place looks.
It's on Main Street. It were.
Uh, they, they have complaints about Timmy Churchill, I haven't received it.
And for a while, we had that for a while, that new park on the side of the road, but.
They, they still.
They're still.
But that's a force, this is not being forced.
And it's not all over the place, I mean, it's organized and like.
It's a force.
Organized?
Well, it's not, we're talking about, you know.
Do we want, do we want that use allowed downtown?
No.
No.
I say no.
How about the guy that's across from the daycare side? Hands all placed, is that?
Norm.
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 Is he, is that downtown?
Grandfather, it's grandfather, oh, that wouldn't, you couldn't build that.
That was Joe Uus.
Yeah, Joe Uus built that as the bus.
He was grandfather that went to special.
Joe Grant one, did he get in? I don't know if he was there, if planning was there.
It was, it was done, Joe Uus actually came for the town. Gets various for, he gets permission to do it, then he gets a variance to put, keep it, keep it going with certain restrictions.
Me.
You guys have a plan?
I'd say put special exception and a yes on Route three.
Yes, that sounds good.
The board of equal sale?
Yeah.
So you, you have a consensus of some sort for those?
We'll check.
You have consensus or?
I say, I just think it should be no downtown.
I think it should be yes on Route three.
Yes, we all, I think we all agree on that.
No, I said yes.
I think that the, the downtown, we have a special exception recommendation and a no recommendation.
Alright, I'll poll, uh, who says, uh, no on, uh, Main Street for motor vehicle sales and service?
I'm at, just a minute. On that downtown, when the guy opens, wants to, wants to open a sports shop, which happens to have sales like, uh, the old scooters and stuff as that, that would, that would be, that's a motor vehicle.
Right.
You allow and have to do that on Main Street?
Alright, so we're talking, when we say Main Street, we're talking this end of Main Street.
And a piece of down ball.
Right, well, right now. Right, well, it says right now it's special exception on Village Commercial. So I'm saying, we keep it special exception for the entire strip.
Okay, go on to that.
On Poland, so.
Yeah.
Alright, who says, so, alright, who says no?
Well, the two of them said no.
Alright, and who says by special exception? Okay. And motor vehicle sales and storage on Route three, who says yes?
Okay, no, wait, um, so it was two to three, this is for the minutes.
Yeah.
Okay, so it was two to three, and the two was, um, that wanted no was Danielle and OJ. And the three that wanted special exception, uh, was, uh, Paul, Joe, and Jim. Okay.
So gas fuel, gas slash fuel sale and storage. Currently a yes. One proposed no. One proposed keeping it the same. So what about electric charging stations, someone wants, wants to clear out space and just put, put a bunch of electric charging stations, is that?
Okay.
Is it called fuel, or is it called?
Well, I'm asking.
It's technically a fuel.
Right, it's fueled by electric.
Be a parking lot, we don't space for another.
Carol.
Okay, so, um, we just got a call today, um, and they wanted to see the permit applica- the permit application and the permit for all of the electric charging stations up at Moon, which we knew nothing about. So. Permission for, uh, those kind of charging stations at.
Dennis.
Dennis is the River Rock, but.
There's somebody ham to end too.
And. But is, was that part of, I I'm just asking, was that part of our site plan review, can you remember without me having to look everything up?
I don't remember.
Um, or was that, uh, a separate request that we needed to issue permits for?
Well, we were to recommend it to Dennis and the ham to end, if you remember.
I mean, I thought Dennis came in, he asked for more charging stations because people just run an extension cords from their rooms and they were just dangling.
That'd be official.
Yeah, I remember Dennis came before the board, he asked about his, his charge.
And I think we voted on it.
I don't think we made him do site plan review.
But, but was it part of the ham to end site that we do?
But I'm just asking, do they need a land use permit for that?
What's that?
I just wanna make sure that they need a land use permit for that, and it's not something that you just consider.
If that's considered a fuel. Then I'd say you would need a land use permit for.
So we, so we're talking about two different things, we're talking about an established business, just adding a few a few ports, or whatever you call them, plugins.
Okay, but.
Or we try, talking about someone's gonna purchase a vacant lot and just dedicate it to that use.
Well, I would think if it's an established business, and they're gonna put in a charging station, it's change of use, because you're putting in a fuel charging station.
Okay, but you know, if you put in a vending machine, sells coffee or candy bars.
But that's not a fuel, electric is a fuel to a vehicle.
But is it a change of use over, if you're gonna park a vehicle there, does the use change if there's an electrical plug in front of it?
It's not a separate business, it's still a parking lot.
No, I hear what you're saying, but what I'm saying is, if you're, what you're doing is you're distributing a fuel to a vehicle. Now, it's not gas, it's not oil, it's, there's not a tank in the ground, but there's, if you, if you're looking at the comparison, so gasoline, diesel fuel has a tank in it. Electric is just a cord that delivers a fuel to a car, it's just another method by which you.
Are we talking about two different things, we're talking about, one is, you know, a lot, where someone's gonna clear it and establish a business, sole business.
But the other, but the other thing I'll throw in is that, one of the reasons to limit gas and diesel fuel distribution on Main Street, because you're so close to the river. Would drain it and stuff like that.
Okay, well.
Can we add the charging stations to the next meeting? The charging stations to the next meeting to discuss?
Well, it'd be too late, it'd be too late for this year, but we can certainly discuss it.
What if we redefine? Gas and fuel sales in our ordinance as specifically excluding a, a electric?
Yeah. Cause I mean, that would change the tax bracket for the property, wouldn't it? The charging station?
All right, minimal, if anything, I don't.
I mean.
I'll bet, I'll bet those are expensive things. I don't know if they're taxed, are they taxed?
I mean, it's a vending, like, they're vending power instead of candy bars, that's the way I look at it.
They use the tax and evaluation of the property to show it is a viable business. If viable business, it was more taxation than, than a vacant lot. With mountains placed by the, by the bridge, which does have a site plan review, if you notice.
It doesn't have any environmental impact, like a gasoline or diesel, so I mean.
It's still.
And, and you're just traffic going in and out. At, like you do at a gas station.
They have to park there for a while to charge.
It's a parking lot. It's, 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 it's no different than, than a, than a parking lot. You go in and park the car there.
I, I mean, I don't see anyone doing it, just, I mean, if you connect it probably with a convenience store because they park and they sell coffee and it's all there, well, the car just charged, I don't think. Someone's just gonna sit there and stare blankly, you know what I mean? They're, they're gonna watch something too.
Well, in addition, the state has received all this money to put charging stations, so I've also gotten calls in the past month. From the woman. Excuse me. The state, who was trying to figure out where to locate all of those best non-Tesla charging stations, and. Lincoln is one of the hotspots, so we were talking about. She has, um, on the, on the, uh, map, she has included like, um, Seven Eleven, McDonald's. Um, several places on Route, uh, one twelve. And they wanted to have it as close to where the interstate, um, comes in, so I suggested that she talk to Woodstock. And I thought that a good place for charging stations would be in the tourist.
White Moon Productions.
White Moon Attractions. Uh, because there's a fair amount of parking over there. That's right off the interstate, and it would be going in that direction. But anyway, um, so I expect that we will be getting something from them soon. If they, if they can't make arrangements for the White Moon Attractions. Because the other places that are on the map, uh, in the report are all in Lincoln, all of one, one twelve.
I think we should be allowing them everywhere.
What, charging stations?
Yep. Yeah.
I think it should be treated like a parking lot.
Yeah, that's all right, so that's, that's not even.
Some people have it at their own homes here at the moment.
So let's not even, let's not even, let's not even dominate it as use, just leave it. Okay, so now we're back to gas, gas fuel stations. I mean, you know, I mean, majority of us put gas in our cars. Um.
Another ten years, use the high density too.
Yep, okay. You know, so there's, there's three stations, you know, two of them are relatively hard to drive in and out. What if someone come, comes and proposes a more modern station, easy to get in and out of?
Well, then, think about it, he can, if he can do it on land, he purchases. No different than having a hotel committee book, you put in a hotel and a piece of land you purchased. And the way you do it, so you restrict somebody from the business.
Yeah.
Under chapter eleven of the US Constitution, that could be illegal.
Well, I think, Joe, by that, by that premise, you know, zoning is illegal, so I don't, I don't think that would fly that argument.
Realize right now. All this stuff would be a stream port, but not each cent with property of personal rights.
Yeah.
The other, the other stuff of the deal good, the real good property, the personal rights for the property.
Yeah.
It's done, it's tipped the scale the other way now.
Yeah.
Well, my thought on restricting it from downtown is that there's already three located here.
Yeah.
Um, it does pose an environmental. You know, threat, possibility. Um.
Okay.
Is, is, is that something the, the board wants to see more of downtown? We need a fourth or fifth station. You're right, they could come in and, and redevelop one of the ones that are already here and, you know, move the building and islands and whatever, make it more in and out accessible.
Maybe we should just allow one going in, not put a couple more of the bridge or gas, they, they get a lot of people coming out of, something like South Peak Park on it. Get any more successful people there than, uh, for going and coming in on the street. Hi Carol.
Right, I mean, you know, we've had trouble with some, I know they're monitoring wells because of the happen issues.
Yeah.
Um, but that, I mean, it's all the requirements.
Well, yeah, it's, they have a strict environmental regulations they have to follow.
Well, you, that's right, you put a tank in the ground, there's a lot of. Lot of red tape to come with it before you put that tank in the ground.
Right.
And the monitoring today is.
Plus, you're gonna have somewhere deep pockets to put it in, you're not gonna get someone.
Well, what happens is that there's. A person has a place and the big oil companies say, we'll put those tanks in for you, we'll put the monitoring in for you.
Yeah.
And that's typically what happens. So you could have them almost anywhere, it's the big oil companies that. Pay for the tanks and the monitoring and all that.
When gas, fuel and service, I mean, storage, why do you put that as special exceptions, taking the gate by gate bait?
I would think so.
All right.
I don't think you're gonna.
I'm good with that.
Okay.
So what is it? Is it changed or not?
So, yeah, right now it's, it's yes in both, so right now general use downtown is special exception and you, yes on Route three. Veterinarians and dog kennels.
What's for a special exception everywhere? Everywhere there you get, you can kind of at least control. How close to the river it is and where.
They did that automatically.
Huh?
They did that automatically.
Yeah. I, I just don't picture someone opening up a gas station along the river on Route three.
Well, there used to be one up there.
There used to be four, right?
Four, yeah, there's a couple.
Yeah, they weren't on the side of the river.
Sure. Um, what's names?
Tim's used to be.
Tim's, who, who owned that for?
Beer back, beer act.
Beer.
Lance.
Lance.
Was it actually Tim's father?
Ted.
Tim, like, Tim Texaco. Uh, Tim's, uh, right now, Lance Beerah.
The notch market.
Notch market, then there was the old man, uh. It was his father more. It was right down, just by my house, it was Bruno Rube. Then there was the, the Shelley, they, they went above, and Indian, as well as the one that, with David's in, somewhere that they worked on.
Yeah, but a lot of them are on the other side, what I'm saying, on the river side.
Make them a special exception if someone came in and walked, you could at least say.
That's, that's fine. All right, how about drug counts?
Wait a minute, did I, so is it special exception in general use downtown and yes?
Everywhere.
Oh, yes, I, I mean, search exception everywhere?
Yeah.
That whether you can, look, i- i- it's not a big deal, they just convince them where they're gonna put it, and, and if you like where they're gonna put it, they, it goes through, if you don't, you, gives you the ability to.
But doesn't the zoning board?
Right, they have to do a special exception.
Why?
I mean, the criteria isn't as hot as a variance. Depends on the circumstances.
Well, and now are they really? Um, the appropriate board to make? Well, they're just gonna decide, you'll still have to do site plan review.
Right.
Okay, never mind.
So.
So special exception on both?
Okay.
I would say special exception, yes, I mean, I'll pull the board again. Um, so everyone's kind of, conception says special exception downtown, so move on. Call special exception on Route three?
Yeah.
OJ?
I go one way or the other, I don't care. I'll abstain.
I'd say yes, uh, on Route three, Joe.
Say yes on Route three.
But yes to what?
Special exception.
Without, yes that.
Yes, a special exception.
Yes, for Route three.
Yes, you're a yes?
Yeah, special exception, just don't.
Okay.
And Danielle's yes.
Yeah.
Uh, it's my thanks what you said.
You know, you, you have a special exception.
This is Route three, we want to allow a gas station on Route three.
Yes.
Okay, one, two, three. OJ, you didn't care either.
I'll, I'll say yes.
Okay, so four, four yeses and one special exception. Okay. Uh, veterinarians and dog kennels, not too controversial.
Must be, it's no Village Center.
Yeah. Retail, consumer service, or rather non-industrial use other than above, which is not qualified, qualified as a home business. Both yes and yes, they don't have any changes to you.
Well, you can't have a, a veterinarian in a Village Center.
Well.
Well, we had, uh, you know, pet groomers across the street. Maybe a year.
Went across the street?
I mean, we can, we, we, once we get to this, we can go to the general, the Village Center if you guys want.
Pet grooming is that? What, what was?
She's not there anymore.
I know, what's it considered?
Right, where the, uh, Realtor.
What's it considered in here though, is it under, which consider veterinarian and dog kennel?
Um.
The pet groom is totally different than that.
Probably more like a. Just a retail, consumer service.
Just like a hairdresser.
Yeah.
Basically, the head, same, same as a hairdresser, just different type of help.
So what would be for, as a business use?
Retail.
Retail, consumer service.
Yeah, consumer service.
But that's not in, in here?
Yeah, the bottom.
I'm sorry, the bottom.
Okay.
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 Um, junk yards. Okay. Pop link at the top of Danielle's, we just start with the earth gravel and stone removal. Anyway. Currently special exception, propose no on the downtown, special exception on Route three.
Want to change that, Joe? Then you can be allowed.
Technically I am, but under US Supreme Court ruling. Cause the town says they have a junkyard, technically I can open a junkyard, the town can't stop me. That's the town attorney who told me that.
Right, but let's, you know, let's try and stick to the business at hand.
That may do, just to fight the town.
Just asking, that, that's what I'm saying.
You know, I'm a technical advisor, you call, if you have procedures.
It's not a lot, I, I'm saying, do you want to change the allow?
Right now it's been allowed by a special exception in both, in the whole general use zone. I'm suggesting we say no to downtown. And leave it special exception on Route three.
So general use downtown should be a no?
Right.
And Route three?
Stays a sub, special exception.
Special exception. And no in Village Center and a special exception in the general.
Yeah. Again, I think land's probably too valuable to.
You are.
Okay, if any, no one's gonna.
No one's gonna come and buy land and put in a junkyard.
Hey, what, everyone good with that?
Yeah.
Gravel pit? Again, I suggest we say no, but I don't think, hey, good night and thanks for joining us.
Yeah, I can't.
Yeah, you do have a temporary gravel pit in town already. Also, if you get a temporary gravel pit. If they move it off the land and they recharge the tax on each lot, you gotta take off it. They're doing that property.
There's nobody mining gravel, so.
Yeah.
But you could have that, you could have that in the general use, Route three.
Yes, that's what I would say, I'm saying no downtown, yes on Route three.
Think that's the only place where there's property to do it.
There is still any land up, soil on Route three already.
I don't know of any land in downtown area that you could do that.
Right. What, do a gravel pit?
Yeah.
I, I mean.
Well, you could probably.
Joe's right, this is probably some valuable.
But they're not gonna open up.
Peak, but.
Well, well, a gravel pit, would, would they open up a gravel pit and then make it into a development? Mine your gravel out of it first and then.
The.
It's been done.
The use.
Doing it not good stock. Right now to the old, uh, divine property, if you notice, they put a, a big trail back there.
So you could.
If you, if you, if you use, like South Peak, you use that as a gravel pit for the development that's taking place on site? I don't believe that qualifies as a commercial gravel pit as opposed to.
Outside door.
Say, say.
Well, I don't know, I think what you start, like gravel pits have their own specific, uh, regulations about mining, so when you're taking it off to resell it.
Different.
The state definitely, I mean, i- if South Peaks are selling.
To people off site.
People o- off site.
They become, they become a gravel.
They become a gravel pit.
If they're just moving it onsite, they still need alteration of terrain, they still need all of the stormwater, they need all of that stuff, but it's not considered a.
If they're selling it, I think the key is if you're selling it.
Oh, was.
I have to think onsite, so if they were selling it to different. Um, site work contractors or something, you know, that were, I think when you sell, when you're making money on, no matter whether it's, you know, I mean, it's not yours.
You, you the way.
Only but taking.
That's why they have that lady that goes out and checks it all up.
They might, they can do it on, it's selling in town. We don't, we take it off site, tax, state will tax it more than, we do a recent twenty thousand, you know.
Is anyone opposed to restricting it from being a, a use on its own downtown?
No, I mean, I don't, I don't think anyone's gonna do it.
No one's gonna do it, let's.
I think that would restrict it, or make it a special exception.
So if they, if somebody do it, they should know about it. We can make it a special exception in case they want, need to do it over here.
You never know who's gonna be the next owner of that piece of property.
Yeah.
Well, how many times?
Especially with the rapids, who knows if somebody's not gonna buy that and turn it into a big gravel pit? You notice?
Well, I'm just saying.
For years. They have to kick it, that's that property over there belongs to Woodstock. They're developing, they take land from one, so it link it, bring the other.
Special exception.
That, you know, town get taxation and going to.
Special exception downtown and a yes on Route three.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
So you changed it to instead of no, as special exception?
I've got, um, earth gravel and stone removal is currently yes, so we made it special exception downtown and a yes on Route three.
Okay.
Um. Manufacturing other than a home business. Currently allowed. Both zones.
We already have one downtown here. Fashioning clothing, remember?
Yeah.
Who do you specialize?
What's that? Really, the old way down here is the old mill shop.
Yeah, he came in for site plan review.
Yeah.
I mean. I guess yes, but no will probably ever come in for it.
Electrocated, no heavy, no heavy industry.
Well, I'm thinking of a, of, like a virgin, you know, I, I don't think someone's gonna come in and buy our most valuable land and, and put up a, you know, a smokestack factory.
Right.
But what if the manufacturing was something similar to that where it's, uh, you know, outdoor recreation themed? You know, what if someone puts in a, a, a maple syrup production facility?
Right.
Or just something that, that fits in.
Ammonious with the community of maple syrup production, you're in the mountains, it's tourist town.
Exactly.
Welding shop in the garage, on the street or something, you know, if they're gonna put in.
Well, that's what I'm thinking of a special exception is that, that if it's a. If it's a, you know, outdoor clothing manufacturer or maple syrup manufacturer.
That would be can assess the.
Yeah, okay, but if they wanna like, if they wanna do lead smelting.
Right.
Why say no?
That's it, you wanna go light industrial, heavy industrial. It would definitely be unable to.
Well, I think that's a thought for another time, I mean, right now. All right, so special exception.
And then yes up on Route three.
Storage or contract equipment. So does that apply? Someone has a house on Main Street and he has electrician in the business, he can't leave his equipment stored at his house?
Yeah, I don't like that either. That's my business. I don't compare it to, to, to store. People, I mean, do you have a backhoe or a loader, small loader?
If it's registered as construction equipment, I mean, why would you not want someone to pocket at their house?
You have to tell them. You need to be.
A lot of people have, yeah.
So I mean, currently it's allowed in both, both zones, I would say leave it.
Okay.
Anyone else?
Well, the village center, storage contracts, equipment, special exception in village center.
Right, so right now we're just working on the two general use zones.
Okay. I thought you were.
Yeah. Um, bulk storage slash warehousing.
That went to the brewery, wouldn't it? Look at all the stuff they, they store in the brewery.
Yeah.
So all these little pubs.
So currently.
I think bulk storage and warehousing as a use means that that is their primary, I mean, yeah, is that their primary.
Warehouse.
Yeah, it's like across from the town office in Woodstock.
Right, self-storage, that's warehousing or bulk storage.
Yeah.
Bulk storage, like it, like the Woodstock station, they get bulk stored on back by the office.
Their primary use is, is lodging and restaurant. The bulk storage component of that business is an accessory to what they do in that rest, every restaurant stores.
Right.
Stuff.
Cooler full of food, you.
Yeah.
Do we have definitions of this stuff, but?
I mean, I think a lot of them we don't, we'd have to, I mean, that's.
Shouldn't we have definitions for, I ain't look, I'm just saying, so.
I mean, there are things that.
You should have something that, generally gives you an idea of what it either is or is not.
We just do special exception on that one too.
Good thing.
Storage and warehouse.
What's that again?
Could you special exception with bulk storage in a warehouse for?
On Main Street?
Yeah.
I don't. I mean, again, I, yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't think anyone's gonna come in and propose it, because we can put it in in case you get something.
Yeah, you always have that risk.
A while back, one of the companies approached me about putting in storage of my land for building materials to sell off this, from this store. They were not gonna play friendly to do it. They put like a subway office or two by fours, two by eight, ton of tubing, cement, bags, this kind of thing. I don't know if you want to go on the main street or not. They give, unless they buy new land.
Okay, if we change that to special exception, can we add a use that specifically says self-storage and then put no in the downtown?
You can exclude it. Well, it's not in every tiny section of town. You exclude self-storage in certain areas of town.
What I'm saying is, if, if my proposal is to say no to bulk storage in warehouse.
Yeah.
If we're gonna go to special exception for that, can we add in self-storage just in the downtown general use area and say no, can't do that.
Yes, you can.
Okay, I'm saying, do we want to do that?
I, I, I don't, I, why would, why would you wanna have a special exception?
To a self-storage?
Yeah. I mean.
I, I just, I just can't think of any place in the downtown area that.
Well, I mean, that's, but using that criteria, there's no place in the downtown area for warehouse either.
You guys remember, we stopped somebody across the street from putting that type of warehouse in, up Church Street. About that, about fifteen years ago.
Self-storage on Church Street?
Yeah.
Well, let's, let's talk about the, the general use.
They'll throw it to four of them, building. He, he said no, he made two comments.
Okay. That was further back, Joe, I don't think he came in for that. He came in for some kind of waiver for his restaurant, I was here.
Nope, he didn't, he was gonna turn that yellow building into, into storage.
That was before, that was more than twenty years ago.
No, that was the same time he put addition of the rest. He wanted to merge, reverse piece in the back. It was for rental, but we didn't allow it because. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Okay, so where are we with bulk storage warehousing?
So.
I propose no downtown.
I will agree with that.
Okay, so two say no.
Okay.
For downtown, what do the three other people say?
I'll say no.
I'll go with no also.
I'll go with no, okay. No. Yes on route three. Got a beat of, um. Next, we'll move on to dimensional requirements.
Well, are you gonna do the self-storage separately or?
No, well, no, I mean. You said no to warehouse.
Oh, okay.
So that's included.
Yeah.
No special exceptions, just a no.
Okay.
So in the general use downtown, I'm suggesting that, that we, we allow um, duplexes on a small lot providing that there's a maximum three thousand square foot of total living space. Whether it's fifteen hundred per unit or there's one big one and one small one, that we allow a small footprint, um, downtown.
I don't like that.
No, I don't need it. And then you lose the green space, you have less room for the parking, I mean.
You have kind of a good size incentive because normally for duplex, you would need thirty thousand square feet and I, I assume that that was some kind of incentive when you created the zoning ordinance.
Right, well, it's right now it says minimum lot size for duplexes is twenty-two-five.
Right, which is not as big as would have been for any other number, you know, like if you'd had one unit, you need fifteen thousand, if you had three units, you need forty-five thousand, you need fifteen thousand per unit.
Well, that's since it restricted your multifamily, then you don't.
Well, yeah.
But. I think it's, you know, I don't think it's a bad idea actually, because it encourages more affordable housing to be built.
Yeah, but you lose.
But let them do it up on route three, not down here.
Yeah, I would agree. If you're trying, if you're trying to make, if you're trying to make your main street pedestrian friendly, you want businesses.
Well, I mean, who's gonna get to walk around, there's nobody living here.
What's that?
So we need more housing.
Put it up on the highway? Incentivize it to be up there. I don't know why we can't get people to build up on highway.
Too bad we don't.
Well.
It will come.
And, and, and it will incentivize, I mean, oh, yeah, they will, but if, if, if you don't, if you don't make it hard on you with downtown, they're not gonna go up there.
Yeah, I can myself.
Okay, so the proposal is twenty-two-five in general use downtown, no exceptions. And then fifteen fifteen thousand provided the duplexes basically three thousand square feet of living living space or less, otherwise it's twenty-two-five. Is that, is that what I'm hearing?
Go back through that one more time?
Yeah.
So how are these twenty-two-five for duplex in both zones?
Yeah.
Right.
So this proposal was to reduce that to fifteen thousand, provide the duplexes three thousand square feet or less.
And then generally use route three?
But now, so. Now it's been proposed, it is to remain to twenty-two-five in general use downtown. And then on route three, reduce it to fifteen thousand, provided the maximum living s- square feet of total living space is three thousand, otherwise it remains at twenty-two-five.
I'm, I'm fine with that. Incentivizes it up on.
I have to write, can you? You have that written down, yeah?
Well, well, on, on my sheet, the one that I filled out. Just take the, the general use downtown and cross that, all out, it just stays twenty-two-five. And then what I wrote for route three, people who agree.
Does anyone have any issue with that?
They do in the part of the three. Take care of only minimal three thousand square feet.
I think I must be too tired.
No, basically. If you build a duplex, this is a McMansion, you need twenty-two thousand five hundred. Build a more reasonably sized duplex, you get a bonus, the lot size only has to be fifteen thousand.
Okay, but in other words, you have the money to buy a big chunk of land up there.
Yeah.
You can build a more than three thousand.
There's no restriction. There's no restrictions, but you need, you need more land for a larger duplex, is what he's saying.
About that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Makes sense.
But can you tell me what the final game of this?
I'm sorry, Paul?
Can you read that?
Okay, well. Dimensional requirements, minimum lot size for duplex, general use downtown, twenty-two thousand five hundred.
Yeah.
Same it is as now.
Yeah.
On route three, fifteen thousand with maximum square feet of total living space, otherwise twenty-two-five. So basically, if you build a smaller duplex.
Yeah.
Don't need as much land.
That's fine.
Okay. Minimum lot sizes for all of the uses, um, nobody suggested any changes. I think that's fine. Um.
Oh. I found.
You wrote it all down?
I am tired.
So front setback. Currently fifteen feet in general use proposed, um, one person said leave it alone. The other person said reduce it to ten feet in the downtown and fifteen feet on route three.
Here, here's my thinking behind that, and we, we don't agree, it's fine, but, but again, go back over to the project over here. One of the complaints that we got was that there wasn't enough green space, yet the, he, he meant the seventy percent lot coverage of density requirement. Um. But, but a lot of, not a lot, but a percentage of his green space was on the frontage of all three roads that he, he had required setback from. If he was, if he could, you know, move those out closer to the, into ten feet rather than fifteen, it's not a lot. But it would allow more usable green space in the, say, common area of, of any building built, not just that one, but.
Okay, but he's, he's in village commercials.
I'm, I'm, I know.
You know.
The theory, the theory is if you let people move, build closer to the edges, then on the same lot covered percentage, there's gonna be more usable green space that's not tied into setbacks.
Can I have someone watch your smoking, because I gotta tell you. These developers aren't looking at it that way, they're saying, give me, give me that little space and I'm gonna put it out there and I'm gonna use everything in the middle for everything I can. I mean, come on.
He's still, he still probably have seventy percent lot coverage.
Okay. Guess we're making more, not less.
But then, and, and then if you do use seventy percent, your, your space in front along the road is gonna increase. And what you say is space for recreation and playgrounds and is gonna be reduced. So you're saying, you're telling me you want more of that space and then you're telling us right now you want. Yes, you are.
No, I'm not.
Okay.
You're trying to twist it, if, if, you're gonna give them the ability to push that building right out to the end and then that's what they're gonna do. They're not gonna.
Five-foot setbacks?
Huh?
How old were the setbacks that were allowed over there?
Fifteen.
Five.
Five, plus five, but he looked for, he looked for a waiver.
They got a waiver.
And I didn't go.
Well, actually, no, his was five on the front, fifteen on the rear and ten on the side.
This is village center.
Right.
Right now, we're talking about the two general use zones.
Wait, but when, she asked about his.
Yeah, I understand.
But I, I think I'll make it bigger.
All right, I'll pull the board. All front setback, general use downtown. Currently fifteen, you wanna reduce it to ten?
No.
Okay.
Can we just do all three at once?
You could increase it to twenty.
I was just gonna suggest that you increase it, but. I don't, I don't know what kind of. General use downtown.
I mean, that would force them to build the structure smaller.
But then they're gonna come in for various.
It forces them to build the structure. What it forces them to do is nothing, because they come in and then they get a waiver. So it forces them to do nothing, to say, if we could just add another five feet, can, you know, we, we could have it this way, and that's what happens.
Okay, but you know.
Well, that'd be a good start.
I don't wanna keep rehashing this one, but if he hadn't gotten those waivers, he would add it another story and then he would have cut the view for the people.
Guess what? Those people in back that bought knew that all around them that there could be four-story buildings. And guess what? That's, look, they, the people of this town voted in those orders, so, so who are we to sit there and say? That, just, just those people have the right to say that they can't have a four-story building there.
And listening and doing what's best for the town, and you're saying no, if it says ten, it's ten.
You know, no matter what's on the books, there's always a feasibility factor.
I think you need more green space in, in town. I think you need more, more retail space on the lower levels, I think all this multi-use stuff, that guy's saying that, that's multi.
He was, he called it multi, he called it a multi-use, but we, we approved it as a restricted multi-family, that's what he's.
You know, I mean, we ought to be saying that all first floor in downtown has to be retail.
Or they can.
Okay, or commerce.
Anything up above that, you, you can build housing above that, because that, that where there you have, it's like you're doing any other town. All, all your pedestrian or your stuff is people going to all the shops and stuff on the first floor.
But I don't have a particular case, but I know the town Plymouth had that and they lost, they tried to restrict.
That's right, they did.
When they tried to do that, said downtown, downstairs has to be retail space, it can't be residential.
Well, anyway, let's, let's figure out just setbacks.
Something about, I'm not saying, go ahead. Let's move on here.
Boy, you haven't got, you haven't figured that one out yet.
So, right. First off, let's do general use route three, does anyone wanna make any changes up there to setbacks? I should leave them as is fifteen, fifteen and fifteen.
I mean, the three before was ten. I said back. That was fifteen.
What's that again?
Read, read the first, the first column, they showed.
No, what I'm saying before that gets changed, I don't know how it gets changed.
Okay, this is the current, we're talking.
I get documented to the health data with ten.
Okay, so I have a document right here that says it's fifteen. Let's, let's use this.
Okay, well, if you think it should be ten, you know, we can both change it to ten. We're here for. All right. So let's do general use downtown, currently, front, rear and side setbacks are ten feet. Proposes to reduce them to ten feet all around.
Currently they're fifteen feet.
Excuse me, fifteen feet. Proposes to reduce them to ten, ten feet all around, front, rear and side.
Which column, route three?
I'm talking, we're talking general use downtown, that's the change proposed.
Catching more stuff under. Already proved.
She had. If, if this is yours. You put ten, ten, ten?
Oh, no, down below, yeah, I wanna.
Oh, that's accessory, sorry, I'm, I'm.
She said fifteen, everyone said fifteen. All right. All right.
I like, I like Carol's idea.
Well, I, the max, maximum lot coverage should be sixty-five, not seventy percent.
Stick, we'll stick here. All right, so Paul, do you favor changing the setbacks in the general use downtown, reducing them from fifteen to ten?
No.
Okay, OJ?
Yes.
I say yes, Joe?
On the side and raise it back, so all three.
Well, right now I'm doing all three, but if you wanna make a change.
I'd like to keep it at fifteen if we could, because it's so little, but we get sidewalk, plus another five, another on the sidewalks on private property downtown, believe it or not.
Yeah, and you know.
You take their five feet, another five feet, and the group, so it'll group, that's fifteen.
Okay, and keep in mind, we're, we're saying downtown, we're thinking, talking fast over shot. Okay, so you say no?
They can always get a waiver.
He can't get a waiver in that zone. Danielle? What, what do you think?
Stay right.
Fifteen.
All right, so three wanna leave it and two wanna change it to ten, so it'll stay at fifteen. All right. General use route three setbacks of fifteen, fifteen feet all around. No one's proposed any changes, Joe, did you wanna make a change?
Route three, yes. Front, leave it, uh. Front, sell, I think, front, leave it at fifteen, aside and rear setbacks, leave it at ten, change it to ten.
Okay.
There's a reason for that.
Okay, go ahead.
If you're gonna build a property and you got fifty feet setback on the sub stand lot, which is fifty, twenty of them up there.
Yeah.
You can have a bill on it.
Okay.
But at ten, you could.
Okay.
The side setback, rear setback.
Okay.
You wanna make it five?
Yeah, that's okay, if you wanna go ahead, go with five.
Up there?
Yeah.
Okay, so. Is that your proposal?
My name is Brian, I have to bond.
Front setback on route three is gonna be fifteen, rear is five, side is five.
Would, would that encourage more people to build up there, like housing and stuff?
I mean.
The lots, the lots.
The less restrictive land use regulations are, the more incentive people have to move up there.
I'd go with that.
Okay.
See, everyone my David has half his bond on my property.
So they go in front fifteen.
Rear five. Paul suggests, OJ?
Wait, it's fifteen five five?
Yeah, yeah, no, yeah, fifteen five five.
Okay, yeah, yes.
OJ says yes, I say yes. Joe? Yes, you propose it, I'm sure. Danielle? Okay, so route three.
What did you say, Danielle? Yes, I agree.
Fifteen, five and five.
So is that a five with you?
So percentage of maximum lot coverage currently seven seventy percent. One person said leave him alone, another person suggested reducing it to sixty-five percent for the downtown area.
Allow more green space.
I was just gonna say, that'd be a good idea.
I mean, like over here, I think in this, you know, the box building over on us, I don't I don't think they're gonna get the green space.
There's not that much property left on downtown, but what's left you could. Sixty-five percent.
I mean, you know, his his my thought is that, you know, ninety percent of the town is green space to be doing. Forest, state forest.
But Jim, you don't have, take a look at. Again, you have to take a look at at what's happened here. So the sub shop there. When Tom.
Tom Adams.
Tom Adams. He fought tooth and nail to use to get them where the uh. Pickle tables where there was trees up there. He fought tooth and nail to keep those trees there until he died and they chopped these things down. You then you take a this place, take a look at the mouth club and loon. I mean, they cut trees all along the front of that. That's not downtown, but what happens is. How many trees do you have downtown? Take a look, take the inventory of what you really. Were become a concrete, the concrete jungle, just like I think Joe made a comment, it'll be just like boss. You're gonna have that, let's start. Unless you start. You know, I mean. Wouldn't be much nicer to have a little bit more. A little bit of green space on Main Street. You know?
We also have some people down before he.
We used to have it before all the development came in and it was houses and it was trees. Now we got nothing, so.
We buy joints and main street. We have good time.
Wouldn't it be nice to just, you know, I I would agree with Danielle. I mean, six sixty-five percent. It might spur a little bit more green space.
Even back in town, like to sell the whole ball field to the development business in the main street.
So there's gotta be a lot more trees on Main Street than there are now.
Yeah.
Just that's a shame, that's all gone.
We said a lot more here till they cut those people.
The utilities. Two or three years ago, they came and. Cut all of the trees that were impinging on their utilities and of course, the more internet we have, the more. Utilities they have, you know, the more space airspace that takes up and the bigger area they need to support.
Yeah, well, look at that status, all back there, plenty of great. Big lines and stuff, I mean, you know, it's so. More green stuff. I I gotta tell you, I think you find more people like that kind of stuff.
We're not gonna do anything about utility companies, it's a right of way.
I know, that's what I'm saying. You were saying all the trees disappear. A lot of the trees disappear in connection with that project.
But lilacs, they're called shrubs, you know, even just having.
Over here at the mall, all those little bases used to have trees and there's a lot of them that are gone now. That's just empty.
It's terrible planning. Poor maintenance. But I I.
I mean, Main Street Boston, they grow.
I mean, like over here, again, do you want a more green space, but you get the waiver for five percent?
I think sixty-five percent's reasonable.
All right, I'll call the board. So general use downtown. Sixty-five percent lot coverage. Paul?
Yeah.
OJ?
No.
I say no.
I say no.
There you go.
Say yes.
Okay, so three to two. I'll stay at seventy.
We're trying Danielle.
I mean, that's the first time that vote has ever turned out that way. You and her voting one way and the three of us voting the other.
Do that?
This this has been very good.
It actually has.
No yes men here.
Yes, thank you for taking the time to go through this.
Accessory building setback requirements. No one's made any. She wants to increase them. So this is really like a shed, et cetera.
Did you do did you do a percentage of maximum lock coverage on general use for three?
Well, I'm gonna leave it at seventy percent. Someone wants to increase to seventy-five.
I know that.
All right, so I made a proposal, so. Route three block percentage of lot coverage at seventy-five. Paul?
Yeah.
Okay.
Used to be eighty before.
Yeah, that's true. I'll I'll say yes.
I'll say yes.
Yes.
What's it gonna be seventy-five?
Seventy-five.
A unanimous one.
Hot dog.
Are you a boy? If you're a boy?
I'd go ask a woman those kind of questions.
Yeah.
You could ask me a little.
The best thing is that you ask, where did you graduate high school? How you get around it? Uh, anyway. Uh, let's see, so accessory building setbacks. You can propose leave the front of ten and increase the rear and side to ten. Generally used downtown, leave route three the same.
I'm not sure. So a accessory building is like a garage or a storage shed?
It's a certain size and height. So.
I don't think it's the garage, you know, you have a house with a garage.
Right, no, it's not a garage. It's a shed. Let me find it, let me find it. Okay, it has to be less um than a hundred and fifty square feet. Or or fifteen feet or less to the peak of the roof. If it's bigger than that, then it has to meet the regular setback.
A hundred and fifty square feet, that's ten by five.
Yeah, I don't know.
Yeah.
No. Fifteen by ten, that's pretty big. That's the size of a single car garage.
I mean, think about the water coming out that roof and going into the neighbor's yard, like Steve has to do with that, you know?
Yeah, that was all that that's crazy, so.
That's the Steve, the Ludwig spirit knows where the girl, you know?
So yeah, we probably oughta. Increase them all to ten.
Especially if she wants to put an apartment, extend a garage and put apartments upstairs, I mean, some that, no, it's not really accessory building.
No, no, but you can't live in an accessory built.
No.
Look, so it it has to be a shed or some.
Right.
It's a small, it's a small garage. I mean.
Ten foot by fifteen?
Couldn't put a car in there.
Put motorcycles in anyway.
motorcycles in there, lawn mowers, that kind of stuff.
Small mobile.
Mobiles.
I mean, I wouldn't, yeah. I have one.
I know, pretty alike.
So, sounds if you're this consensus to raise it to ten feet all around general use downtown?
I would.
OJ?
Sure.
You can allocate especially except for a varied.
Yeah, okay, so.
Um, and not dimensional acquire requirements, right?
Yeah.
What's that again?
You can't do change, we can't change dimensional requirements.
They'd have to go to the CBA for variance.
And it has to be.
And we know hardship this.
Until the members of the CBA were sitting at that.
Board plan board.
We're talking CBA.
All right, so downtown is ten, ten, ten.
All right, so I think, you know, obviously route three, we reduce the. Rear and side setbacks to five, so it should probably be five or three.
This is zero on, oh, I'm sorry, that's.
Maybe leave it at ten for the front. Five on the rear, five on the side.
What about ten on the side? I mean.
Well, it's already five for the main.
It's five for the main building.
Yep, you gotta leave the lower room, like you said, for the drip, all that.
So the front would be ten and then the two sides would be five?
The general use route three.
Ten five five. Now, what's not on here, but has been brought up in heights.
Yeah, heights are really important.
So.
Let's keep it where it is for time being.
Do we wanna?
Well, I think, you know, maybe we wanna talk about the height of village center. Yeah, what I wanna talk about.
Because some of those.
The item on Main Street, general use, uh, seven good point, anyway.
All these old mill facilities are being morphed into apartment buildings. I mean, those things are getting quite large.
What about?
Unpleasant street. Who is the one that built that? Well, I mean, the building is huge. Pleasant Street.
I mean, I think it's more so the building size that people are not so much the use.
Yeah, right, building size.
Well, we.
I mean, if you wanna make a biggest. One village center. You can, the building's more than two stories, you can increase the setbacks all around for every story, like. So much more for three stories, so much more for four stories.
Yeah, but that doesn't really do anything for your line of sight, but the the whole height thing came in. Because of we didn't have a ladder truck. Once we get that ladder truck, the height thing, that's when it came up, because we couldn't, the town couldn't. Get at. You know, more than a couple of stories. And once it blocked the ladder truck, that's when we went to that higher. Thirty whatever feet to the primary.
What were you thinking, OJ, when you?
You're thirty-five.
Number one, we should define what a story is, because if if, you know, if you build. Two stories underground for parking, and I'm not saying if we we shouldn't allow it. But I'm questioning, do we count those as stories of the building? Because then on top of the underground, two 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 levels of garage, you then can build a four-story building. But and and then if you use the roof as living space, you now have technically a seven-story building.
But you can only have, right, but you can only have a.
Five space, right?
Well, look, well, look on page forty-one, forty-one, I had, it's all ingrained because I had to move. The the big, the big clip. Page forty-one. The wooden that I changed and I had to move it. Okay, so here in forty-one. In it's starting with B. In the general use village center, rural residential and residential. Zones, the following height restrictions apply. So there's the maximum structure height thirty-five feet measured from the primary on the uphill side. Structure, and the question is, do you really mean it?
Yeah.
And then, uh, two. Uh, there shall be no more than four floors used as living space, maybe living space is the wrong term here. But no more uh than four floors used as living space above or below ground level. Is measured through any vertical plane of the building. So I think there was an effort here to be four stories, including whatever's underground. If they do the the uh.
Garage is living space.
They're arguing that the garage is a living space and suddenly you have five stories.
Well, you take a look at like Brian Holt's place or some of those other places over there, they got. They've got more than fours four floor, I believe, if you count the ones down below, yeah.
Well, and in addition, you know, he's, you remember, he lied about what he was putting on the different floors. And he gave us a separate, a different plan than he gave the HOA for a group, so.
Right.
He uh, you know, he had a bunch of bunk room, well, he had eight. Full-size bunk beds in one room that was supposed to be storage.
Does it matter really how many how many floors are below ground? If you really wanna live below ground this ladder.
I guess the thing is, if you're a parking garage below ground a couple of floors, then then it ain't worth you to make the hotel.
What are they at retail below grounded? And, you know, like they do in some of these places in Boston, I mean, it's retail below ground and above ground is. Living space. I mean, so you.
What consists of the primary E?
But I mean, that's what happened to Dennis over here, if you remember right, when he built. Um, I don't know what the.
He had his units below grade.
Correct, but remember, he was not gonna use that lower floor because it would have put him too many.
Oh, what he's, they gotta variance for the seven stories.
Right, he get the variance to be able to use that lower floor for living space, because it was gonna put him too. Too high up above there.
But there was, I forget the reason.
And then and then there was.
The toxic waste, he had to remove the whole stories with.
Yeah.
The toxic waste underneath there.
And then there and then there's the issue of which is, which do you call the front side of the building? Because over on the back side, it's higher than thirty-five feet, but the roadside, which I call the front, it's not.
But it doesn't say the front, it says the uphill side.
Right.
Which which allows.
Did we change it after that, maybe? I don't know.
Oh, so it's, okay, so when you have your twenty-five percent slope or whatever it is. You have the house is twenty-five feet from the primary up here or thirty-five feet. And then it it basically goes all the way down here, so you have. You know, four or five stories or four stories, or maybe five if somehow.
That's what's happening when you're building on the steeper slopes, is that you can bury. Stuff into the ground on three sides and you only have one side showing.
Like a walkout.
Yeah, like a walkout, you know, even though they don't, most of these places around here, no one has, most of the second homes don't have backyards. Because they can't, if you get out, you you got your hair on a slope, you know, there's no flat space.
That's why they like it, though. They like feeling like you're on that upper deck. It feels like you're just about to go down that th- that diamond, black diamond. And you're sitting up there on your on your deck. Well, anyway, um, so that's the height part, and maybe living space. Or maybe we can interpret living space as living garage, or maybe you don't want to do that.
I guess i- if the if the garage is underground. I'm not as concerned about that as. There are so concerns.
Most of the garages are up here. On this thing, they're up here.
I'm I'm thinking more of of a hotel that's gonna not, I'm not thinking of a house. Okay, I'm thinking of of a commercial structure that's gonna put a parking garage underground.
We had one proposal.
Thirty, forty cars underground. Okay, that'll that allows them to more densely build on, because now they get four more stories they can build over.
That one relatively higher than otherwise would be.
If if they had, if they if they had to put that parking out. On this space and limit it to seventy-five percent or seventy.
So then their setbacks then become, they've, right, because if they use their whole setback is underground. Parking, then they could go up and have a a much bigger area.
Well, you're right, they didn't use the setback. I mean, typically they'd use the building. Envelope, but still, if you could put thirty cars underground, that's thirty less parking spaces you need on your.
That would go against your lock.
That's that's thirty parking space with zero lock.
Right.
I don't necessarily object to that, but it does allow denser, you know, you're talking about. Traffic and all of that, it it allows much denser.
But it also allows.
But the the thing I do object to is. The use of 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 a of a rooftop for. Usable space, whether you call it livable or not, I'm not sure. I mean.
Restaurant.
If I put a rest, well, if I put an outdoor restaurant, because if it's a restaurant that's enclosed, that's that's livable space. But if you put a pool and a deck and a and an outdoor bar and and a.
Why do you object to that?
Because again, that's it's it's taking what would normally be livable space with lot coverage. It's putting it forty feet up in the air.
Does it make any difference? Does it make a difference?
You you're concerned about. Overbuilding on lots and making it too dense.
But if if you can, see, I see that working the opposite. If you put, if you put. Parking space down below. It allows it allows for a. A denser building, but it also allows for more. A denser building, but it also allows for more space around the building that's not being used for parking, to be used for green space.
Well, they're not gonna use it on green space.
They're gonna cover the lots seventy percent.
With the building. And.
You know, you said everyone, everyone that comes in is gonna find a way to max out the lot.
Yeah, so they're gonna come out with seventy percent coverage.
So they're gonna max out the building on the lot? You think they're gonna go right out to the, to the.
To the full seventy percent, sixty-nine point nine percent lot coverage.
Okay, so they're gonna go, they're gonna go right out to the setbacks of the thing, of the lot. And, and you think that they're gonna, I mean, that underground parking would be huge. The hotel would be, the size of the, the building would be huge.
That's what they want.
I mean, y- you're talking. Huge building. Cause they don't have to have any parking all around, it's all down below.
Well, I don't think, I mean, theoretically, you could.
Yeah, I don't think they're gonna do that, but you're right, they could. They could do that, which would be terrible. If they use that whole, i- i- if they did something like that, that would be terrible, because it wouldn't allow for any green space. I think we need something that does.
If you can, if you cover the lots seventy percent. Thirty percent of it's gonna be green space, now, some of that green space might be. You know, the, the.
Propane tank firm.
Okay, or, or.
Propane tank.
Use it to sext you by.
A, a gazebo or.
Smoking area.
Smoking area, or whatever. Um, a snow plow, snow storage.
Yeah.
Um, dumpster stor- dumpster storage, I mean, so it's really not green space, it's just not.
Yeah, maybe we should ident- identify what green space really is, it's green, it's trees, it's grass, it's.
Even in winter time?
What's that?
Even in winter time, it's green, it's still there.
What are you gonna do, knock the tree over, put snow on it and then plant it back in the spring? Yeah, of course it is. You're not gonna mow all your shrubs with snow, are you?
Well, half the plant shrub.
Well, maybe either way you plow, you might.
You know, un.
I think you plow, plow.
Those bike trucks run.
Stocks, you guys.
Yeah, underground parking is, is expensive to build. They're not gonna build that so that they can have more than seventy percent of green space, they're gonna build that so that they can. Get exactly seventy percent and, and. Fill it with commercial space. And again, I'm not opposed to the underground parking and, and it, and it certainly, uh, allows more. Density that's not seen. You know, if it, it doesn't distract, um.
Well, but maybe if you had a trade-off, like you would have two layers of underground parking, but in exchange. You have to have only sixty-five percent of lot. Or you have to use. Some ad degrees.
Didn't, uh, didn't you say that before?
Yeah.
I think you mentioned something before about that, if you were gonna go underground, that you would, if you were gonna do that.
Trade off.
The trade-off, you mentioned something about a trade-off, that the green space requirement might be more.
Yeah.
Didn't you make a comment about that?
I guess I didn't necessarily say underground, but I said, what if we allowed a five or six-story building? And again, your ladder truck argument is correct, but, but keep in mind now that we have places like the Hampton Inn. All right, even though it's only four stories, that has the, um, uh, standpipe and.
The spring.
Supply suppression system. That, that sort of reduces the. Need for.
For the ladder.
For the ladder truck, which is, which is why, which is why we got a seven-story building over there, you know, they have a very impressive box suppression system. Um, what if we said you could build a five-story or a six-story building? But you need, instead of seventy, you need, you know, fifty-five percent lot coverage. Now that they have more green space.
I would rather say more green space than lot coverage, cause it equates to both, right?
On Main Street, though.
What, with that taller building?
Yeah.
My, my, but the other part of that was that it had to be X feet off, i- instead of a ten-foot setback and be further back. You know, I, I mean, I think Riverwalk's gorgeous building. And it's far enough back that it doesn't block the view, if you move that same gorgeous building ten feet off of Main Street.
Give me the rundown.
That would really change the character of this town, and I, I don't like that, and, and I'm thinking that. Back in South Peak and, and even Forest Ridge, if they were to propose a, a, a hotel instead of condos. Uh, you know, spaces that are, that are back off Main Street, it wouldn't hurt to have a taller building. If you put Riverwalk, picked it up and put a second one back in South Peak. We just blend in with the hillside back there, be a beautiful building, it's not interfering with views, or it's not creating a tunnel effect.
No, but it's not on Main Street.
But again, Riverwalk is.
It's set back.
On Main Street, it's just set back.
Well, I made a proposal about fifty years ago. Height relation to the setback to the highway, we're slowing the site. If we had, had it went through, it wouldn't have the Hampton Inn, Main Street, that hides it in. Block the view. We don't have an order to that type.
That I'm bringing up the suggestion, and it wasn't just.
Well, we'll go up the interstate, tell it, tell it, come off the interstate exit. The only building you see sticking up is Riverwalk. Out of the whole town.
Yeah, you get that space, you get, you, you get that, because you get the variance for the planning board, zoning board. To tear downhill middle, you have to go the same height coming in.
Yeah.
Then you get a, you only get a loan from the government to fix up the brown side. Point five percent, one and a half percent.
Take a look at the, the Rapids piece of land. If we allowed a five, six-story building down there. The first three stories are still gonna be below Main Street because the trucks are also.
Drops off, yeah.
Okay, so, so. To me, that wouldn't be an issue, and it's far enough off of Main Street, it's not gonna, again, you're not gonna have a tunnel look back, you're not gonna block the view like right in front of your face. Down there, you won't even.
Well, if you take a look at like, like the mountain, well. Yeah, you can't see any, even though that's far removed, you go up Main Street, I mean, go up the canyon, and you can't see any of the slopes, because that hotel's all in front of everything.
And, you know.
And that's far removed from Main.
And if we did that same thing up on room three, a lot of the tall buildings, but they have to be further back from, from room three.
There's a, there's a problem there. They're in the Green River. They're only about a hundred feet from the river, in the west end, we're seventy-five feet from the river, and it's, and it's set back the state, right, so they go right up to the fireplace.
On that one lot.
No, all the way down.
Take Indian Head.
Indian Head, from, Indian Head down the old.
Take Indian Head. You could build.
Yeah, that's the only place the mayor down, down to the coolest place, you could do that one.
No, Campus World.
Coolest place, you could, it's too narrow.
Campus World, you could put a big building and no one even know it was there.
Yeah, the side of it, yeah.
I'm not saying it can fit on every lot, I'm saying that it would be. Far and few between, but it would allow developers to, to. Develop something like Campus World, you could put in a. Six-story building. And no one could see it, and it doesn't block anyone's views, and it makes it more efficient and productive for, for the, for the developer. I mean, that'd be a good solution for, for, um. Um, residential housing as opposed to a hotel.
We already had proposed it when hotels going up in that property.
I, I know, but, but I'm talking about.
I know.
A zoning change. For the future. So, that's, that was my thinking on that proposal. I know, we're getting to be ten o'clock here, we have, this is, today's the deadline, right?
Yeah, let's move on.
Okay, well, that's good. That's a good discussion, actually.
Okay, so, looks like. We have gone through the same thing, so we haven't had changes, so I can move on.
But you didn't do the Village Center yet, right?
I don't know.
You only did it general use and.
We can make some discussion.
I only put that column in that someone at the last meeting talked about, maybe make the change to Village Center.
Okay.
And I just give you the map.
All right. So, why don't I go by category? See if anyone who makes any changes.
Are you talking about Village Center now?
Yeah. Residential usage, um. Only thing not allowed it. Plan phase development. Does anyone wanna make any changes to any of the residential uses on Village Center?
They're probably.
Okay. Let's move on.
Yeah.
Public uses. Any, does anyone propose any changes to the public uses at the Village Center? In the Village Center? No? The business uses. Would anyone like to propose any changes to the business uses allowed in the Village Center?
We already restricted uses on, already. The gas station, I mean, the garage is never enough in it.
I don't know why you couldn't have a veterinarian, okay, at the Village Center.
Yeah, I think the concern with that would, is the dog kennels. What's that noise?
The barking.
But that's, there would be more than dog kennels.
Right, that's what I'm saying, dogs, I, I, I just have dog kennels, but, but a, a veterinarian, if someone wanted to open up a.
What if you put a special exception on that?
That's fine.
You know, kennels in the climate controlled environment, it's not like the windows are open.
You're a most veterinarian place, I mean, because they're. They control, I mean, animals that have, have one time coming in.
If you have one with dog box every day, all the time it's open. I give it a three.
All right, industrial uses, um. Would anyone like to propose any changes there?
Yeah, bulk storage and warehousing.
No. All right.
I mean, we don't allow it in the general use downtown, we just allow it.
But wait a minute, you were talking about, so what is? Someone wants to come open up a brew, brewery, super brewery?
Well, that's an accessory use to the, um.
They want to open up just a brewery, then the bulk storage might be a problem, because they, they, they have bulk storage.
Well, then, so that's manufacturing, other than a home.
Why don't you make a special exception?
Just do a special exception.
So just a brewery, so they're a manufacturer, they're manufacturing beer, right?
Yeah, so it's just manufacturing, other than home business, not allowed, and bulk storage is allowed, so.
True.
I mean.
Why not, so if you wanna have a brewery down there.
On Main Street, yeah. Like we have right here.
Yeah, so we're talking Village Commercial, down the center.
Yeah.
You can make that a special exception?
Yes.
I don't think so.
Okay, all right, I'll poll, Paul, yes?
I, I have a question.
Yeah.
Is, is. Is a brewery that manufactures. Beer and serves it classified as a restaurant, we count tables?
I think, and I think he's talking about brewery, standalone brewery as opposed to.
Okay, so, so, so they don't open the doors?
And then also, if, 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 they don't ship it off the property, then it's considered a restaurant. If they're brewing it and having it just on their own property, then it's, then it's a restaurant, but they're brewing it. Like the Woodstock Station, they brew it and they sell it on their property, but they also brew it and distribute it.
But they're, so they're a restaurant, cause they serve it on their property and sending it offsite is an auxiliary use of that, of that property. If all they do is brew it, I mean, should put it all into a truck and move it somewhere?
How is that?
This is where I think you need a definition, so I don't have to, it's a long. Trip to get there, but you gotta know what these things, what you're talking about. What you're defining.
Okay, so I mean, you wanna, are you suggesting we make that a special exception?
Yeah.
Okay, so I heard two yeses, I'll go around, yes?
Sure.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes, all right. So everyone, special exception on manufacturing the Village. Commercial.
I mean, somebody wanted to come in and start like roasting coffee beans or something.
All right, so then.
Wait, 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 um.
This is, um. The VC.
I know the VC, but which, which are we talking about, warehousing?
We're talking, no, we're talking about manufacturing, other than a home business.
Okay.
Special exception. All right. So then currently bulk storage slash warehousing is a yes, um. We didn't allow it on the other end of. Room one twelve. Paul, you have something else to say?
You're looking at the bulk storage?
Yeah.
I was thinking, I, I went back up to the storage contractors equipment, I don't know what's called contractors equipment. In the Village Center, I mean, you know. Is it someone who has a. A little lower like mine, is it someone with a little small backhoe or a commercial lawnmower?
We're really a home-based business.
Yeah, but I mean, uh, I'm talking about people that may, might have some of their own equipment, you know, we got. We have people that just have equipment.
Village shop, and, 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 you know, you can, they have their backhoe. Cook there, you're the farmer with.
Well, I mean, that's, they're not really contractors, that's a.
The use of that property is not for the storage and contractors equipment, the use of that property is retail.
Okay, so, so what you're saying is that. If you have a retail business or some other business and you have some equipment. You can store it there, it's just if you're gonna, storage of contracts equipment would be, give me an example of what you would think that would be.
Someone that has an excavating company that tracks, that parks all their ten-wheelers and backhoes, that, that's their main business.
Yeah, cons on, on connector road.
Okay, so how about a property management company that has snowplows and loaders?
I guess that's the main business, right, it's not accessory to the.
Right, I would say that'd be storage and contract.
So where, where does that, where does that start and stop?
Approximately here to, almost to ninety-three.
Does it go to South Peak?
Oh, there's the picture right there.
No, South Peak is all general use.
The storage of contracts equipment is currently special exception. We wanna leave it like that?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, anyone else?
I agree, we, I agree completely.
All right, so that now, the other thing is bulk storage slash warehousing. Board voted to make it known downtown. Which in general use downtown.
Village Center should probably be known, that too, shouldn't it?
Yeah, we're all trying to get that.
I agree.
Okay. Minimum lot sizes, dimensional requirements. Anyone have anything, changes for that?
I like to see the lot coverage going to sixty-five percent.
Those lots are awful small, most of them, I should say. And so, I just think that would be very restrictive.
You think?
I mean, look, look at. Look at the size of the lots down there.
They are small, but.
I mean, you get, the only, the only trip that are, uh, that are not tiny is the American Legion.
The school.
We're talking about the, the, the PC general, American Legion is general use now.
Then what's that big one up at the farm right? On the outside of Main Street?
No, that's, uh, Boots Shopping Mall, oh, the shopping mall, okay.
But that's what I'm saying, so the blocks are small, shouldn't it, shouldn't you allow less coverage on them to allow for more green space or other stuff? I mean, with smaller lots, you don't wanna allow more coverage, you wanna allow just a little less.
Typically in a town, the downtown area is the most densely populated.
Most densely used, I don't know what populated.
Well.
You're down. Most densely construction.
Yeah, and it's like populated, population is behind it.
Thinking of that's for a waiver.
There you go.
I'd say leave it, I'd say leave it at seventy.
I'd say leave it at seventy.
I'll poll.
I'll go with seventy.
There you go, you don't poll anymore, you got three.
Okay, and you two want to reduce to six, sixty-five?
I, I'd say sixty-five, yeah.
Be, three at seventy, two at sixty-five.
That's twice the money.
What's going on here, you do?
I don't know.
Jeanie?
I'll say accessory building setback requirements. Um, five, five and zero.
I say we up it to ten also, like we did. Downtown.
Yeah, I think the zero ought to disappear, for sure.
About five, five and five.
About ten, ten and ten.
I mean, I can see making the side setback, we make it zero to five, because that way, you're not on good terms, you're the Navy, you have no way of, uh, fixing the building.
Well, even with fences, they gotta be a foot away from it.
They're gonna be a foot away, so.
Yeah, zero, it doesn't make sense.
Right.
I mean, a zero setback, I think is in, in a city with two buildings up there.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
And they share a common wall and it's.
What about ten, five and five?
I'll second that.
This is just for accessory buildings, all right?
Yeah.
Ten, five and five.
So if you have a shed, it has to be at least ten feet off the front line, but it could be five feet under.
Okay, so, I'll poll, Paul?
Yeah.
OJ? I say yes, Joe?
Ten, five and five.
If you all said ten, five and five, chose your idea, okay, so it'll be ten. If you all said ten, five and five, which is our idea, okay, so it'll be ten, five and five. That's it for that. Penny Bay's camp.
I'll put that up to the next meeting if you want.
Yeah, why don't we, you know, Carol, create a history.
Yeah.
And Carol's saying, this is. This is a whole different understanding than I had of the. Original.
Well, I went, I, I went through all the notes and all the.
I should have just talked to you, I had all that. I just don't have time.
Went through all the digital files again.
Now, I have a couple questions.
Okay, other business.
Well, can you guys bring those back the next time with, with packets that have to do with the Penny Bay's camp?
Yeah.
Can you email your Penny Bay's camp?
Yes, I've got a whole pile on there.
There's something else on the agenda, right? Jack Daly?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Exactly, oh, he's telling.
Um, so Jack has asked to be, there's a vacancy for the representative for one, uncle, we have two seats, Joe has one of them.
Yeah.
No problem.
There you go, Joe.
Jack Daly has to be appointed as the second one, so let's, if you want to. Get appointed, I think we should go with Jack. They're promoting the point, Jack Daly.
I'm gonna move. I second that. OJ will second that.
Right?
Hey, Joe. Everybody's in favor?
Paul in favor? Aye. Break any other business?
Uh, can you check with them?
OJ?
Yeah.
What's going on with the water tank?
I got it right here.
What's going on with it?
What's going on, it's been approved and unapproved.
The, um, Forest Service approved. The location of the, of the water tank, um. The engineering contract has been signed. The, um, next step is to do the core sampling of the soil. And I believe Calla is gonna get a machine over there to do that before the end of the year. And once that's done, um, the engineers will stop. Preliminary design.
That's good.
What, what's going on with the safety services building, when they gonna start that?
The construction meeting was actually today, the pre-construction meeting, it was actually today, with the contractor, and they're gonna get, um. Going on that, we have one, um. Surveying thing, when we did the survey, it was just a rough, you know, bound, more of a boundary survey, they need to. Rapidly information, um, but that's gonna happen hopefully this month, and, um.
Did it through the faith plan approval, through the whole building?
Did it what?
The D P S, the faith plan. They've again, they just gave the general contractor what's going on.
Any locals could get bids on?
Um, what defines local?
Uh, there work like, uh, Taylor or Calder.
Well, no, because it.
Already builders, like any electricians or stuff like that?
It always gave the bid.
I know that.
To the general contractor.
I understand that, I'm just saying that, were there any that, uh, using local people?
Not that I know of.
Okay, one.
Second point.
That was nice to do the text, but I'm gonna go to local people sometime.
Second point I wanna bring up.
Go ahead, Joe.
It's nice to see the, the bid as low as it can be, and they're gonna, they will bid out their aspects of the job. And we all know that there aren't electricians or plumbers or house builders in this area. That don't have like months and months or years of, of work lined up. So.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm in that business, so I know, but there are, you know, it's not just, I just ask.
Okay, uh, go ahead, Joe.
What's going on with that? Steve knows where they're drinking now, the water running down, they need to abandon, yeah, we're not two years now. Guys, we'll come back and adjudicate it.
Okay, so, Carol, can you please, um, reach out to the Abada? See where he's at?
Jane Ludwig.
I remember his name.
I don't know. But I mean, he did promise to do certain things to the board, so.
He's been out of state, he's been out of the country, but it's, no, Jane's probably.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
All right, OJ, Joe second, all in favor?
Aye. All agrees and upsets here.
Any other further discussion, any, any objection?
Carol, where are you going, you leaving on, going somewhere nice?